So I'd like to call together to order the meeting of municipal council, the fifth meeting of municipal council here on Valentine's Day, February 14th. I'm sure everybody's very excited about that and spending their Valentine's Day with all the great company in the room. I'd like to start off by doing a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, Lenape, Powag and Atawandron. We honor and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area, the two-row Wampanoag Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, civil covenant chain, the beaver hunting grounds of the Haudenosaunee Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKay Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishinaabe, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampanoag of the Anishinaabe and Haudenosaunee. The three indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipewa of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muntzi Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. And now, I'm delighted to move to the singing of Oh Canada. Eleanor Gabru, born in the Forest City, hails from a family of musicians. Eleanor was recognized as the ISO Project winner in May 2022 and later released her debut single, Make Sense, on November 23rd, 2022. Recently Eleanor was a feature artist in the inaugural London Music Accelerator. And if you recall colleagues, she also performed at our inauguration at RBC Place. And you can catch her performing once again at RBC Place during the City of Music Conference on March 31st. Please join me in welcoming Eleanor to sing Oh Canada at this time. And please stand.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, our true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Next, I'm going to move to the podium for a couple of recognitions today. First, before I start the recognitions, I just want to thank Anna, who's in grade three, from Surrey BC, who sent me a very nice Flat Stanley to do exciting things with. And so I thought I would get a picture. Good. Because what's more exciting to do in London, Ontario than come to a council meeting? Flat Stanley will be doing other things, of course, but on Valentine's Day, this is the place to be. So thank you for accommodating that. The first recognition that I will do today is for Black History Month. This is our first council meeting of the month. And so on behalf of London City Council, I am proud to recognize officially Black History Month. We reflect on black history here in London dating back to the 1830s involving a population of approximately 60 individuals, almost all of them having escaped slavery in the United States. Most lived in the vicinity of Horton and Thames Street. Within 20 years, London's black population had nearly tripled, and there was a church and a school for black residents. We think of Londoners like Cedric Martin, the first African-American man to fight in the Civil War, who is buried in the Woodland Cemetery. We think of James F. Jenkins, a Londoner who inspired the NAACP, founded and founded the Canadian League of the Achievement of Colored People in 1924, while also launching The Dawn of Tomorrow, Canada's first black newspaper, from his family home near Highbury and Trafalgar. We think of those who came to London in the 1960s from Jamaica and elsewhere in the Caribbean, helping to grow our city's black population. And more recently, thousands who have come from Somalia, Sudan, and other African nations. Most of all, we think of the black history that is being written today by more than 11,000 black Londoners who live in our city. We have much to celebrate from our shared history and also much to learn. I encourage all Londoners to take part in Black History Month activities and events over the next few weeks and learn more about some of the, to learn more about some of the options on what you could do, and to do a short recognition of our proclamation, which we made earlier this month, and I have a copy of that to present. I'd like to event, invite Carl Cardigan and members of the coordinating committee up to the front to say a few words. I'm going to present you with a copy of our proclamation. And if you could, I would love it if you could share some of the activities for everyone to hear that are coming up in the remaining two weeks of the month, which would be fantastic. So why don't you do that first? And it's a pleasure to see you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We're excited to be here. This is the first time we have been at City Hall during a city council meeting to have black history recognized by the city. About four years ago, we, we wrote about a proclamation for Black History Month, and we jumped a number of hurdles to have it happen. So we are really excited that we're here today. We have a committee of about 30 folks, volunteers. I have a couple of folks with me, Leroy and Rashid. I'll have them say a few words about their organizations. But we are excited to present a really full program this month. Black History, London Black History Coordinating Committee provides education, information. We kind of act as a clearinghouse for events and activities. We do more than February, but I think February is where we, we shine. We bring a lot of activities and people together. And so this week, we have a number of events. And one of the big events that's happening on Saturday, two events happening on Saturday, is Black Business Open House. We're doing that with the City of London. And at 2:00 on Saturday afternoon, we are premiering our film on this future slave chapel. The mayor talked about a church being built. This was built 1830s, 1840s as a place of worship, as a gathering place for the community. And it's been moved to Gray Street, and we moved it again in November to Fanshawe Penner Village, where it will be its permanent home. And we will develop programs and activities around the chapel once it's sort of restored to its sort of original glory. And we have our closing event, the 25th. Let's go to our webpage, lbhcc.ca. You'll find out all the things we're doing. And Leroy, you want to say a few words? And Rashid?
Just want to say thank you so much for your support here. As part of the committee, I work in an organization called Luso Community Services, and it's a multicultural, multi-ethnic organization. We have a mission statement. If you don't know where you're going, you're never going to know when you get there. So our mission statement has a three-pronged approach: inclusiveness, wellbeing, and the prosperity of the city. So my responsibility, I'm what's called the multicultural outreach program coordinator. So primarily what I do is a lot of work in the school settings and a number of different school boards on anti-racism, cross-cultural work, and also regarding black history. So it's an honor to be a part of the committee with Carl Caddogan. We've been on the committee for a number of years, Rashid as well. It's just a wonderful opportunity to educate folks, you know, because education is a passport to the future. Because tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for today. And the community is changing, so we're changing with it. So we appreciate your support and thank you so much for that.
I will explain myself in French.
Thank you very much, Rashid. Thank you all. And, and again, we are from Rashid. Tell me about what's happening at the community center. We've tried to make our committee bilingual, English and French, over the last number of years. And we thank people like Rashid who've been part of it. And we thank you for inviting us. Thank you very much.
Yes, and, and I'll, I'll present you with our proclamation in just one second. But please, on behalf of all of council, to the members of the committee who have done so much planning and all the volunteers, please pass along our heartfelt thanks for all of the wonderful activities that are planned this month, and of course throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll do the next proclamation from my chair. And don't worry, I meant recognition, not proclamation. So for those who followed the news, we've obviously seen the, the very tragic events stemming from the very significant earthquake impacting Turkey and parts of Syria. We have robust communities in the City of London from both of those communities. I know that I've spoken to leadership in several of them, and there are many, many Londoners who have families, friends, loved ones who are impacted, who are still missing. And it is a very, a very dire situation there. Looking at media reports even this morning, it's approaching 40,000 people having lost their lives with thousands and thousands still missing. I certainly passed along both condolences and thoughts on behalf of city council, as well as our support for the fundraising activities that those communities are doing and are about to do to support activities back home in other countries for their friends, loved ones, and others. The Canadian Red Cross, I know, is accepting donations, and there are another, other avenues. So if Londoners are looking to assist and help in any way, there are many avenues to do so. But please join me in, in expressing your thoughts and support for those who are going through a very difficult time in Turkey and Syria. I will move to councillor Pelosi for the final recognition today.
Thank you, Your Worship. Today I honor and rise to recognize the Women's March. It's an annual event held on February 14th since 1992 in remembrance and honor of the lives of missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, two-spirited men and boys. It has been a day to grieve, to remember, and to highlight the traumatic and wide-ranging impact and to highlight the traumatic and wide-ranging impacts of the violence against these people, their loved ones and communities. At President Day, Indigenous women disproportionately continue to go missing or be murdered with minimal to no action to address these tragedies or systemic nature of gender violence, poverty, racism and colonialism. Women and girls 15 years and older of Indigenous communities are 3.5 times more likely to experience violence than non-Indigenous women and girls. Their violence is also obviously more frequent, but also more severe. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada has recognised this and we all must take action to help eliminate it. Today at LOSA from 11 to 3, is gathering to honour missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, two-spirited men and boys. We thank them for their vital role that they play in the community in helping us all to heal and move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the recognitions. Review of confidential matters to be considered in public. We have... Oh, sorry. Disclosure of curating interest for members of council. Councillor Van Meerebruggen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to declare a conflict on the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee report dealing with the budget on item 4.1b having to do with business case P2, specifically with children's services, this children's services portion as my wife operates her own daycare.
Any other disclosures? Okay, there's one other thing I forgot to note at the start of the meeting and that is that the City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. If you need to make a request specific to this meeting, you can contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519 661 2489 extension 2425. There are no other disclosures. Recognitions are complete. We have no matters to be considered in public. That moves us to council in closed session. For those in the gallery, we do need to move into closed session after the vote. We will have the public leave the room so that we can have our closed session. I will note, given there's a number of members of public here, we do have committee rooms open on the second floor. If you'd like to wait there, you certainly could rather than waiting in the hallway upstairs. I don't anticipate we'll take too, too long for our closed session, but we'll be back for public session shortly after that. So I'll look for a mover to move in closed session for the items that are listed on the agenda. Councillor Cuddy, seconded by councillor Stevenson. Any discussion on moving? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing vote motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, it'll just take us a few minutes to move into closed session format.
We are on item five now, confirmation and signing of the minutes of previous meetings. I have the fourth meeting on January 24, 2023. I look for a mover for the minutes. Counselor Van Meerebergen, seconded by Counselor Roman. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries fifteen to zero.
Next is Communications and Petitions, Section Six. As you can see, there's both, there's a large number of pieces of correspondence that have come in, both on the regular and added agendas. They all relate to items within the committee reports. So what we usually do here is have a motion to refer all of those pieces of correspondence to the relevant committee reports, which we can do all as one motion. It's prepared in the system. Is there someone willing to move the referral of all of the correspondence to the relevant portions of the agenda? Counselor Van Meerebergen, seconded by Counselor Frank. Any discussion on that? Okay, that will open in the system for voting as well.
Closing the vote motion carries fifteen to zero.
Number seven, notice which motions is given. I have no notice that motions would be coming forward under this section, so we'll move to Section Eight, which is reports. And I will start with the Committee on Protective Services Committee and Counselor Pelosi to present that committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been given advance notice to pull item ten, being 2.9, the Housing Stability Service Purchase of Service Agreement template separate, and eleven being 4.1, the exotic animal establishments.
Okay, does anybody want anything else aside from ten and eleven dealt with separately? Okay, seeing none, it looks like you can make a motion, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. I will put all the items, with the exception of ten and eleven, on the floor, noting that these were all unanimous votes at committee, and a lot of things just dealt with, single source procurement, Parks and Rec master plan, and we had a wonderful discussion at committee.
Great. Are there any questions or comments for the items that are before us, which is the committee report, items one through nine? Okay, seeing none, I will open that for voting. Counselor.
Thank you. I'll put item ten, being 2.9, the Housing Stability Service Purchase of Service Agreement template, on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor for consideration. Any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, then I will open that one for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries fourteen to one.
Counselor.
Thank you. We have one item left, being eleven, being 4.1, the exotic animal establishments. As I did not support this at committee, I'll be unable to move this forward today. So someone else will have to put it from the floor, on the floor from the committee.
Was the vice chair okay to do? I can't remember. No? Okay, I need a member of the committee. Counselor Stevenson, you're willing to present this item? So you'll have to stand for presenting the item, and you'll be, stand for the whole time, but you'll be able to participate in the debate. So Counselor Stevenson will present item 4.1, which is the committee recommendations on exotic animals. So you're willing to move that?
I'm willing to move that motion. Do you need me to read it?
I don't need you to read it. It's in the, it's in the council agenda. So debate, discussion, questions on this particular item? Okay, I don't see any. So it looks like we can vote on, on the item that's before us. Counselor Van Meerebergen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just once again, I have to reiterate, we have to look at the facts of what we're dealing here, dealing with here. This is a recognized first-class organization. The Director of Animal Welfare for this organization is a world-leading authority on reptiles. Far from some of the emails that I've received from some of the special interests that refer to this as torture and torture chamber of this organization, nothing could be further from the truth. I would ask that we support this referral, and that's what this is, a referral, and move from there. Thank you.
Counselor Pelosi, and then I can go to you.
Thank you. It's going to be a question through you to staff. If council tonight accepts committee's recommendation, realizing there'd be a PPM in March, is that PPM in March just feedback on the bylaw? Like, is this a done deal and implemented if we approve this tonight and the PPM is strictly for bylaw wording?
Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, this is not a dumb deal, so it would be a public meeting. You can take the input from the public and then make a decision on the bylaw at that time.
Counselor.
Thank you. At this time, I'll just make my comments that this item is not new before council. The prior council dealt with this in the 2018 council term, and it's back before us today. My concerns still remain the same about animal welfare, having received many emails from Londoners that they do not want council to go down this path, that this is not what they see a progressive city being. Those concerns still remain for me. We've received letters from the London Humane Society raising their concerns. We've received a letter from Tourism London that as per tourism definitions, as the business model operates now, it does not seek it as school trips are not tourism, as children going with their grandparents when visiting isn't the definition of tourism. At this point, I'm asking council to vote no on this item before us tonight. If we vote no tonight, the item is a decided matter of council for the next year, and there is no need for another public participation meeting at committee. We did hear from the Chair of the London Animal Advisory Committee, and many communications have been received. So for me, if we just vote no, make a decision tonight, as extensive staff time has been put into preparing potential bylaws, reports, asking and answering committees' questions, counselors' questions, that we have a great deal invested in this for time behind the scenes, and it's not a path I'm looking at taking for moving London forward. This is not how to move London forward for me. We have bigger things to be focusing on, in my opinion, being housing homelessness and other needed services in our community.
Okay, I have Counselor Stevenson next. Okay, yeah, because you only get to speak once, so everybody just realized that at council. Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I am going to be quick on this one, because I don't think Londoners want us to spend more time on reptilia. I will not be supporting this amendment, and I would encourage each and every one of us not to support this amendment. I can go into the many reasons, and we have heard loud and clear from Londoners the reasons why this amendment should not be supported. The risks, the lack of enforcement capacity, promoting zoos in our city, this just amendment will not just apply to reptilia. I, I just want to speak from my point of view. I've been on council eight years. This amendment has come to us, this is the fourth time, and each time I did not support it. Nothing has changed. Londoners have not given, I've heard from really maybe one person that we need to do this, other than the reptilian delegation. Londoners do not want zoos in their city. It is going backwards. I'm not going to support this. Nothing has changed since last April, other than the accreditation from SEESA, which was removed. I understand reptilia is applying for another accreditation, but nothing has changed. Londoners do not want zoos in this city, and I would encourage you not to continue the conversation. Have this go back to committee. Have the public, what are we asking of the public? Are we going to be listening to the public at committee? I don't think so. I think we should now make a decision here at council. Thank you.
Counselor Privill.
Thank you, your chair. I would just like to say a few things and maybe explain why I've been behind this and supportive of it. In terms of due diligence, I did speak to the people in bond, to the, both the counselor as well as the staff, and the last 20 years they had really great experience with it, no issues whatsoever, and they say it's win, 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 win for the city, win for the people, and win for the organization. I do think, and exactly in the words, it has never posed a single instance of threat to the community or had an animal escape. I did talk I did talk to Jim Facet, who is the CEO of CASA as well, and it was a lengthy conversation. And when we talked to our legal department, we actually would have our restrictions would be at a higher level than the ones in Vaughan. So actually, our community would be even more protected. I just want to bring a couple of other things. You know, currently, we are in terms of the bigger picture. It's a potential of London becoming a destination city. And we all travel throughout the world. If you look at certain areas, it always starts with one, two, and they are added on for destinations. We collect from the hotel municipal tax over $3 million a year from them. We do have an issue coming up with one hotel that's attached to the RBC Centre, and they are looking at a conversion. If this conversion happens, it's going to limit us with the conventions in our city, and the subsidy potentially will be even higher than before. And I'm going to tell you one, I'm going to add it to the last experience, kind of more personal one, and that's going to potentially make you think kind of potentially more why I'm supporting it. Couple of weeks ago, and it wasn't the first time, it's the last time, around midnight, I'm running around downtown with hot soup and hot tea for the people to actually survive, to survive. And we have, actually, in a few minutes, we are going to be talking about public restrooms downtown London that we couldn't even keep up open 7 to 11 like in summer. We are cutting it down. Now there's another proposal, 8 to 8. My point is, are we going backwards? I do agree, I think we are. But on the other hand, I'm looking at it from a different perspective. And yes, reptilia is going to open it away. So again, they will have the reptiles there. So we are talking about specific reptiles that we can limit and make it stricter than in a city of Vaughan. It's been working there very well. Everyone is happy with it. They are very grateful. And I really, when I say in terms of the backwards, yeah, I'm sorry. It's not, I love animals, I will always care for them. But I'll tell you right now, when it comes to the... I do see a potential for helping human lives. We are losing people by the river and on the streets. I'm not going to say on daily basis, regularly. I'll tell you right now, I never received email maybe once a week, maybe once every two weeks, when it comes to the human lives. For the reptiles, we receive so many. I do see it as an opportunity. I really honestly do. It's not that I don't care about the reptiles. I just think in a bigger picture, we do have an opportunity to become a destination. And guess what? Start earning the money, what I heard five minutes ago, to help with the homelessness, et cetera, et cetera. If you look at the provincial and financial, sorry, provincial and federal, and especially the provincial money with the new bill, we are going to be more in charge of our destiny more than ever before. We have to start looking after ourselves, after our own growth. And I did think this was a good opportunity for us to grow and make money for the things that we need to make money for. Yes, in this perspective, I see it as a human life, potentially, over a reptile life. I will always choose the human life, and I do see an opportunity here. And again, I'm building it. It's not that we are setting a precedence that we are going to be the first one in Ontario. We have a proven plan, 25 years plus at Vaughan, and everyone so far tells you win, win, win. And I would like to locate this way. Please consider all aspects of it, and thank you.
Other speakers? I know councillor Stevenson, you probably want to speak last. That's why you were holding back. So other speakers? Councillor Trossard, go ahead.
Mayor, thank you very much. In an earlier meeting, you invited me to do some of my own research on this. And I did that, and I did a lot of research. And I'm not going to tell you I can report it in five minutes. And I'm going to try to keep my comments very brief. But I just want you to know, we need to say no to this tonight. This has gone on too long. We have other things that we need to be doing. And should this persist, should this linger, there's a lot more that can be said in terms of why this is a really bad idea. But I really think we have to move on to other things. The CAPS committee has had a couple of opportunities to put forward a reasonable amendment. I don't think they've done that, and I think the due diligence has not been done. Now, one comment I need to make for sure is we're being told that there's never been a problem with the Vaughan or with the facilities. And there were inspections, there were inspection complaints from Paws. There were a lot of problems. And I can't, I don't have time to read all of these. Vet records could not be found, there were cobwebs, the exhibits were not clear, there was not adequate water put out, the water was green, snakes were retaining their shed, again, dried vegetation, the puff adder had a very flat body, less energetic, lights out, not in real working order. Don't let anybody tell you that this has just been a spa, that this has just been an easy go and there haven't been problems. There have been a lot of problems. They did not get their accreditation revoked because it's a great facility. And I really think at this point, we're being told a lot of things that are just not true, like there have not been problems. That's false, it's just false. We're being told this is going to have a great impact in terms of tourism. Well, we have this letter from Tourism London in our packet saying they've never contacted us. There's been no analysis. People are talking... People are talking about how this is going to have a great impact on London as the destination city. There's no evidence for that. And had they gone to Tourism London and got a positive report, that would be a different thing. But let's not invoke the benefits of tourism if they haven't even had this discussion formally with Tourism London. I've got a lot more to say in terms of what was in the Toronto report, in terms of the very serious effects that this is going to have on service delivery, on the ambulance, in the hospitals, should there be a problem. And the answer to that has to be more thoughtful than, we don't think this has ever happened. Because there are protocols in place. Treating somebody for envenomation is going to be very expensive, and it's going to take qualified personnel. I do not have confidence that this operator is able to do that. So I think I'm just going to, I think I'm going to cut my comments short and not even take my whole five minutes because I've got a mass of data here. None of it points to anything reasonable that can come from this project. So we've spent enough time on it. By voting no on the committee report tonight, I believe we will put a stop to this. And I'll be voting no, and I want to urge everyone on this council to vote no. Thank you very much.
Other speakers? Okay, I'll go to you, councillor Stevenson.
Thank you. I heard councillor Hopkins ask what has changed, and I would say just look around at the faces around this horseshoe. And to, will we actually listen if there's a public meeting? That's a very good question. Those opposed mention human safety, animal welfare, disease transmission, and the proliferation of zoos. Vaughan has had reptilia there for 26 years and experienced none of those concerns, including the proliferation of zoos. In fact, we received glowing written letters of recommendations stating many of the benefits reptilia has brought to their communities. A quick Google search lets you know that many exotic reptiles are currently for sale in London, Ontario, right now, let alone what can be purchased online. These fears of all of these things are unfounded, and there's a word for that. I hope we're not making business decisions based on those. None of reptilia's reptiles are from the wild, and 80% are rescued. What do you suggest we do with these unwanted reptiles? We have a struggling mall and commercial tenants that want and need this new tenant. We have teachers that want a new field trip to offer, and children who could use the exciting adventure. We have families and seniors who want and need affordable outings, many who can no longer travel even to Toronto. How do we, as a city, help the businesses and families who are truly struggling right now? For zero cost, we can give them the chance that reptilia brings people into our town and into the mall, that they might buy a meal nearby or stay overnight and go to another of our amazing attractions. We can offer families affordable outings, a new day camp, and a new field trip for their class. These are simple things that could make a difference in the lives of some of our residents. Who are we to say no to them? I have heard the deputy mayor said that he does not want us backfilling the province on matters of human welfare like homelessness. Are we really going to do that for animal welfare? Are we going to backfill the province in terms of animal rights? That's a pretty, that's not a stance I wish to take. And if we are going to take on human safety regarding animal matters to this degree, are we willing to take the same level of scrutiny to our dog parks, to our pet stores, and to pet ownership? I have heard councillor Tresso and others advocate vociferously for getting public input. I trust that that stance won't waver here, and we will allow a public meeting.
A point of personal privilege, councillor? Sure, go ahead, you have to stand. I'll hear it.
I always stand for...
Councillor, please stand.
I always will stand for meaningful public input. I am not going to ask the same people to come back and say the same thing again to the same people. I cannot imagine that we're going to get more people coming out. If we need to do another PPM, that's fine. But let's be reasonable about this. We've heard the arguments.
Councillor, you've made your point on personal privilege about correcting your view on public participation. I'm going to have the matter dealt with as a point of personal privilege. So with that, I don't have other speakers, so I'm going to open the vote for... I'm going to open the vote, and just a reminder, this is the committee's recommendations. So you're voting on what the committee moved, which is a referral to a public meeting. And all the requests for delegations also be referred to that particular public meeting. So that's what's before us, that's what's on the floor, and that's what we'll vote on, and I'll open the voting.
Closing the vote, the motion fails, six to nine.
Okay, councillor Pelosi?
Sorry, I think councillor Trossow was asking a question about the vote.
Yeah, you can't put it back up, but you can find the vote in your system and certainly share that out as you see fit. It's hard to put back up after it's flashed up.
That's okay. So just for the public who has gathered, the motion failed, which means it's not progressing to a public participation meeting in March. And that item concludes the report for the Community and Protective Services Committee. Thank you.
Okay, the next report is the third report of the Civic Works Committee. I'll go to councillor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you. I'm looking to put, first, the Civic Works Committee met for their meeting just recently, and on January 31st, sorry, it wasn't that recent. And I'm looking to put forward items for councils today from that report. I have not heard from anyone that's looking to pull any item at this point.
Councillor Van Meurbergen.
Thank you. If we could call 2.5 from the report separately, please. So it's not voted separately.
Yep. Anybody else want anything dealt with separately from this? If you have just a question about an item, you're not looking to change it, you can ask the question when it's on the floor. So I'll go back to you, councillor, to craft a motion, one request for something pulled.
Thank you. So I will look to put items, all items except for item six, on the floor.
Okay, so that's on the floor. Questions, comments, discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open all of those items for voting.
Councillors Lewis, Hopkins, Ferreira. Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, and I'll look to put item number six on the floor.
Okay, item six is on the floor. Any sort of questions, comments?
This is the rapid transit implementation for Wellington Street from Queen's Ave to the Thames River South Branch.
Sorry, my apologies for interrupting. Any questions on this? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Thank you, Chair, and that is all the items that were in Civic Works. Thanks.
Thank you. The next item, item 8.3, is the seventh report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee meeting. I'm going to have deputy mayor Lewis present this. This essentially has two items on a pecuniary interest and components of the setting of the strategic plan related to our process along. I believe this is the section that we refer to component to council on, so I'll let you navigate us through that, deputy mayor. And just so you know, we have preloaded some of those options that we voted on in committee in the system, and so we are able to utilize that same process here. But I will let you present the report first.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, I will...
It's not, actually, you know what? The clerk got me ahead of myself. It's the ninth one that we have to do that on. So this is the one where we're just putting the information out, and it's a much easier report.
Actually, I was going to say, I think that we actually need to deal with that later, that this first one is really a for information report. This will be the shortest of the three SPPC reports that we're going to deal with today because councillor Pelosi will be up next with the eighth report in the budget, but I will put all of the seventh report on the floor.
Okay, any questions on the seventh report of SPPC? Okay, we'll open that report for approval.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
That's the entirety of the seventh report from the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. Yes, and I'll come back to my earlier comments later when we get to the ninth report. But first, we have the eighth report of SPPC, which is our budget. And so I will turn it over to councillor Pelosi, our budget chair, to present all of the items in the budget. I believe there's at least one pecuniary interest in this section, but I'll leave it to you to lead, councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure that this one time in January, we sat here all day, and it's going to be much quicker tonight as we've already done the work. I do need to pull item P2, as there was a conflict, it was voted on separately as councillor Van Meurbergen abstained at the budget meeting, and we'll need to do so again tonight. I'm going to note that we've done the collective work. That was our budget day, where we did the full day of deliberations and come to these numbers. And anyone who wanted their vote recognized, that's in the report, will be receiving tonight of those breakdowns of the votes that had split votes on them, so that's already noted. So hoping we don't need to pull too much, if anything else, apart tonight as our votes, where we varied, are already noted within the report. So I will put everything on the floor unless someone else, besides councillor Van Meurbergen, would like something pulled separate.
Yeah, so as councillor said, I know that there were divided votes at committee. Those are all in the report. those are all in the report, uh, certainly if you want to pull it all apart again, we could and vote on them all separately, but as the councillor mentioned, this represents the collective work of committee, uh, and the budget as a whole, uh, she's put the whole thing on the floor with the exception of councillor Van Meerbergen's conflict, does anybody want anything in the budget dealt with separately beyond what councillor Palozza has pulled out? Councillor Frank, go ahead.
I'd like to pull item 10, as it deals with the, uh, amendment that councillor Ferrera and I are making about the bathrooms downtown.
Okay, so we have the conflict plus, uh, item 10, which is the, uh, entire operating budget, um, separate. Councillor, can I ask a question, um, before we proceed? Is there a budget impact to the change you're gonna make that would require us to change all of the budget numbers? If there's not, we can proceed one way, if there is, we might need to make that decision first and then proceed with the other votes.
I'd like to defer that question to staff, if possible.
Uh, I, I know we don't know, I, we see the letter, um, but maybe you could perhaps explain, um, what I'm looking to do is not pass all of the numbers in the budget, go back and change the operating budget, and then have to go back and change all the numbers we just passed, so, uh, I'll go to the, um, deputy city manager.
Thank you through the chair, so because the intent of the motion is to use a one-time, uh, temporary funding source, we would recommend a draw from the reserve fund, and as such, it will not impact the budget approval today, and would be done outside of the budget process.
Okay, so that means we can consider this without, uh, a budget impact, which means we can proceed in the, the order that, uh, I intend to proceed, which is what councillor Palozza suggests, did councillor Priville?
Through the chair to the staff, in terms of the reserves, this initiative was charged to the LCRN in the past, would it make sense if there's money still in the LCRN to use it for that, to finance it through LCRN?
Councillor, I'm, I'm gonna stop you right there, um, we don't actually have that item on the floor, I was just looking for clarification so I can proceed with the budget votes, when that item comes on the floor, that would be a great part of the debate, um, to ask those sorts of questions, so I'll let you know when that point comes, I'm gonna go back to councillor Palozza's motion, and I'm just gonna have the clerk, uh, just, uh, let me know exactly the order we're gonna proceed here. So we're gonna do everything except three and 10, then everything on three except 2B, which is the councillor's conflict, and then that part, and then we can go to 10 when councillor Frank will want to speak, so, right now, what we'll have on the floor, councillor, is everything except three and 10. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Councillor Van Meerbergen? Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Councillor Palozza.
Thank you, I put item three on the floor, everything except councillor Van Meerbergen's, uh, conflict.
Everything in, uh, item three, um, except for the conflict that councillor Van Meerbergen, uh, claimed, any discussion on that? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Councillor.
Thank you, I will put item three, the portion that has councillor Van Meerbergen's conflict on the floor.
Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero with one recused.
Thank you, I will put item 10 being for appointing the operating budget on the floor, recognizing councillor Frank and councillor Ferrera have an amendment.
Councillor Frank.
Thank you, and has, um, councillor Ferrera and I had been working on a, uh, budget amendment, uh, specifically about keeping the downtown bathroom locations open for, um, the eight to eight hours as opposed to twelve to five, and so we circulated, um, a draft amendment to councillors, um, and it was included in your package, um, we have recently done a couple edits, as we had some feedback from various councillors and from staff, um, and I have circulated those, uh, edits to, um, the clerks, and I was hoping they could maybe pull it up, I don't know if that's possible at this time, just, uh, for a full review, but the spirit of the amendment stays the same.
Sure, and it sounds like councillor Ferrera is willing to second, so we'll have the moved and seconded motion put up so people can see, and then, um, because the public can't, uh, see it, uh, once it's up, I'd like you to read it out as, as it is on the screen. So colleagues, click the, um, the current item or refresh their screens, um, you should be able to see, uh, the amendment now, I'll go to councillor Frank just to read it out, just to make sure the public can, uh, can hear the language as well.
Thank you, um, so the amendment is as followed, that city staff be directed to take the administrative actions required to maintain the washroom opening hours provided at the Dundas Place Fieldhouse in Victoria Park for the remainder of 2023, or until further information regarding hours and use of public washroom facilities, uh, from the Housing and Homelessness Summit strategy is received, funded by one-time drawdown from the Economic Development Reserve Fund to a maximum of three hundred and fifty thousand, and portion B, that city staff be directed to compile a report on existing public washroom facilities across the city, their hours of opera-, or hours of operation, their locations, their staffing requirements, and their usage rates for Q3 2023, to allow council to determine if there is sufficient public washroom access, and if the hours of operation align with community programming.
Okay, uh, that's moved and seconded, discussion councillor, deputy mayor Lewis.
Uh, thank you, your worship, so I will share that, uh, while I was not in support of what was originally circulated, uh, I am in support of this, and I want to thank both councillor Frank and councillor Ferrera for being willing to engage in some dialogue with me, uh, in, in terms of getting this to a place where I could support it, um, I think this is, uh, something where we absolutely need some more information before we start making decisions, and that's why I'm really supportive of the section B, where we're gonna get a report back, um, we do, I think, have to take into consideration, uh, our staffing capacities, the, the cost of this, as well as the fact that we're, in this particular case, we're talking about two washroom facilities in the downtown core, um, but as we've been discussing the strategic plan, there's been a lot of discussion about, uh, equity, accessibility across the city for various things, that's got to include a discussion around public washrooms, I, I know councillor McAllister and I, uh, share Kiwanis Park, which is a long stretch of great green space in the east end, uh, that does have some washroom facilities in it, those aren't always available to families even during times where there's community programming like softball or t-ball going on, uh, and instead, we've had porta-potties, uh, put by the ball diamonds, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the most effective use of our resources in terms of providing washroom facilities to folks, um, but I also, uh, have heard, and I want to take this opportunity through you Chair, uh, to ask our, our staff, um, just in general terms, because I know we can't get into specifics of, of individual situations, um, but as we're operating right now, are there some, uh, staffing, uh, labor concerns around our, the safety of our, our employees, um, in these locations?
I need someone to let me know who we could go to for that, Mr. Mather's.
Through your worship, just to clarify, our, the two specific locations that were highlighted for the three hundred thousands at Victoria Park and for the Dundas Place space, so, so in both those locations, we, of course, we're always concerned about our staff and being able to make sure that they feel safe and protected in the workspace, uh, in these two locations, we do have security personnel that are also there to aid them, so that is actually part of the cost that you're seeing today.
Thank you, appreciate that, uh, so, again, uh, I can see why there's a, a desire to have some, some, what I'm gonna call a stopgap measure, to, to keep these facilities available for a longer period of time this year, um, but I do think also, we have to give ourselves time to absorb some of the information that's coming back from the Housing and Homelessness Summit, um, uh, that, by the way, I'm gonna take this opportunity to offer a, a short bit of praise to our city manager Lynn Livingston, I've heard nothing but incredible comments about your amazing leadership on, through that summit from those who participated, so thank you for all the work that's, that you and other members of staff have put into this already, uh, as we start talking about starting up low-barrier community hub spaces, uh, for those who are living rough and living in homeless situations, it's not just about the washrooms, it, it may be about providing showers, uh, laundry facilities, look, those kind of things, but as those hubs are identified and brought into operation, it may change the need for public washroom access, uh, both on Dundas Place and Victoria Park, but consideration of other spaces around our city as well. So, like I said, I'm very supportive of this where we are now, I was not very supportive of getting a multi-year budget ask in place when we're only gonna talk about two locations, uh, and not knowing how the Housing and Homelessness Summit, uh, results were going to play out, but what I have here in front of me now, thanks to the councillors, uh, for their engagement on this, is something I can support, and I hope colleagues will as well.
Other speakers to this? Councillor Ferrera, go ahead.
Uh, and thank you, and through you, um, I'll keep it short, I do like to thank, uh, the deputy mayor, thank you for supporting this, it was our intention to, uh, gain as much support in the writing of, of what we're trying to, to push here, uh, just so we can get everybody on board, because it is something that the city needs, just a matter of, you know, it's, keep it really simple, to reduce it down, you know, we have an increasing population, we have a lot of people struggling out on the street, we also have our, um, the general population at large just walking around that would require these facilities, and it does, uh, it does hit a lot of the demographics we have, um, just using the space here in the downtown area, so we figured that reducing the hours just doesn't make sense, so that's why we did bring this forward, so we are looking for everybody's support to hopefully, uh, pass this, because the, these hours, just to maintain them the way they are, is, is needed, um, so that's why we were really engaging with the city treasurer and the deputy mayor, just to see if we could make it written in a way that everybody could, could support, so I do thank you that, uh, for that deputy mayor, and, uh, to staff for helping us out on this, and I do hope that we can get support from the rest of council to pass this through, thank you.
Councillor Priville.
Through the chair to the staff, just to reiterate what you were saying, and I'm regularly in touch with the staff at, on Dundas Street, and they actually feel things are getting better, safer, and they feel really good, less and less incidents, and again, I don't wanna speak of all the residents and businesses downtown, but many actually felt that the summer seven to eleven was much better, because it elevates the pressure from both residents and the businesses, because in the evening hours, homeless population tends to go even more to the businesses, because they don't have any other chance, so guess what, they either go to the businesses, or they do it outside, and then businesses have to clean it up, so actually, I'm grateful for eight to eight, uh, uh, but certainly, uh, seven to eleven would be preferred, I do understand that downtown is not the, the only place in London that's dealing with this issue, but I'm glad that this has been altered as well, but on the other hand, I was hoping that we would consider potentially even more until the results of the, uh, of the summit are, um, announced, or the strategic plan is put in place, thank you.
Uh, I have my, myself next on the speakers list, I'll, I'll turn it over to deputy mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, I'll assume the chair, and you are next on the speakers list.
Uh, yes, so I want to express my support for, uh, for the general motion, I, I do have one suggestion, um, for the movers, um, i- in the staff-directed report, um, I, I think that there's a, a number of reasonable and easily measured, uh, items contained in that report, um, but with the specific reference to usage rates, when you're referring to across the city, uh, I know that we don't have staff monitoring, uh, washrooms in neighborhood parks across the city, and nor do I think that that would be a great use of our resource, so perhaps if we could put usage information, it might involve surveying or contacting, uh, community organizations or other sports organizations that use the fields, that could give us some insight into the usage, but not usage rates, I think that that would, uh, that would move us away from having to have a staff member in each and every park across the city, um, because the way it's read right now, it would be very difficult to capture that information without someone on site actually capturing it, so that would be my suggestion, otherwise, very supportive of the direction that you're going here, and I, I, I'd love to vote for it with that, that small change.
Uh, thank you, worship, I saw councillor Frank, uh, giving a, a nod and a smile to that, so I'm gonna check with the mover and seconder to see if they're amenable to changing usage rates to usage information, and I'm seeing thumbs up, uh, from both mover and the seconder, so we'll just ask the clerk to make that small language amendment, and I will turn the chair, uh, back to you, your worship.
Okay, so, so that adjustment will, will be made in the language, given the mover and seconder are good with that, councillor Hopkins, I believe, is next, thank you.
You got it right, thanks, uh, thanks, your worship, and really supportive of this, thank you to the two councillors, uh, bringing this forward, uh, I'm glad the change to the report coming back to us is, is slightly amended here, because, uh, I know most of, uh, washrooms out in my area do not have staff, or, uh, really not even, uh, knowing what the times are, and just following up on councillor Priville's comments around the time, will the report coming back, would there be an opportunity at looking at the hours, I know we're looking at eight to eight here, uh, in the downtown, uh, area, but, uh, it was, it was interested to hear about the seven to eleven and, and about the time our pub, uh, washrooms are open, and does that also include porta-pots, I know porta-pots have brought into, uh, some of our parks as well, just, just, right now's not the conversation, I understand, but with the report coming back, I wonder if these areas will also be looked at? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, our read of the direction to staff is that we would report back on all hours of operation of all available public washrooms, that would include those that we do not operate directly, like public libraries, is our understanding, so, a fairly significant and robust enterprise-wide piece of work that's being requested here, but that is our understanding, that it would include hours of operation of all those places, and yes, during the pandemic, we did put, uh, temporary washrooms in place, if we have those, we'll include them in the report back.
Thank you, other, other speakers who haven't spoken? Okay, uh, duly moved and seconded, you have it, it's got, uh, the language is updated, um, with that small change that, uh, I suggested, and I appreciate, um, the mover and seconder accepting, uh, so, I, we will open this for voting then.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Councillor, we need an as amended for this, uh, this piece.
Okay, uh, moving that motion, item as amended.
And because it's as amended, I need a seconder, so, uh, councillor Cuddy, seconds, um, is there any discussion on the motion?
Is there any discussion on the motion as amended? So this is the operating budget now, with this small change in it, all of ten, "as amended". Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries fifteen to zero.
councillor.
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank the public staff and colleagues for the 2023 budget process, and for your help throughout it, and the public conversations. And it's been a pleasure to be your chair for it. I look forward to the multi-year budget so far. That comes next. And that concludes the eighth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee report.
Yes, colleagues, and before we move to the next report, let me just say, I asked at the start of the term for you to support councillor Palozza as the Budget Chair, which you unanimously did. I want to thank councillor Palozza, on behalf of all of council, for navigating us through this final piece of the last multi-year budget. And of course, you'll have lots of work to do leading us through the next multi-year budget. But we appreciate all of the information that you've given us, all of the work that you've done with us individually to either prepare or discuss amendments, all of the work that you've done with staff in ensuring that councillors who wanted to make changes or had questions about the budget were able to access that and find the right people, particularly with the number of new councillors going through this for the first time. So I would ask council to join me in saying a heartfelt thank you to councillor Palozza, and of course, all of the city staff who do all of the work on the budget process. It's quite, it's quite the endeavor to do. I've done it a number of times in the past, and so thank you, Budget Chair Palozza, and thank you to our city staff for helping us with that budget. Thank you very much. And the good news is, there's lots of meeting left, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the ninth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. This is the one that I got a little ahead of myself on. There's a number of items contained in this report. I'll turn it over to deputy mayor Lewis to present.
Thank you, your worship, and I guarantee this one is not going to get applause at the end. So I'm going to put the ninth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee on the floor, with the exception of, I believe it's only item four, four point two, but I'm going to look to the clerk to make sure that I've captured. And that is the piece with the draft values statements, where we referred all three to council without a decision from committee. So seeing the clerk nod that that's correct, I'm going to put the remainder of the report on the floor. This was a very, very busy Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee meeting. I'll just remind colleagues, we had the London Health Sciences Centre delegation joining us, we had the housing pledge for 47,000 units that we had to deal with, we had the motion around restarting hybrid versions of our community advisory committees. Among other things, we had a resignation from the police board, we had an appointment to the ecological community advisory committee dealing, to deal with. So we covered quite a lot. We did get some things really fine-tuned a bit on our strategic plan. We did define our mission statement and our vision statement, but we did not complete our value statement, so we're going to have to go into that next. But I'll put the remainder of the report on the floor now.
Thank you. So that's everything except the component that the deputy mayor mentioned is on the floor. I have councillor Van Meirbergen with question or comment.
Yes, I'd like to comment on four point one, which is number three in the agenda. Can I do that now?
Yes, now would be the time.
I think it's important, very important. This has to do with our housing pledge. And I'm supportive of the 47,000 target, and it is a target and a goal, given to us by the provincial government. But that being said, we have to be very mindful that the provincial government's own policy on this clearly states that it has to be the right type of housing in the right place. And even our London plan is quite clear on a number of occasions, that we must be respectful of existing neighborhoods and the type of housing and intensification that goes next to those neighborhoods and affects those neighborhoods. So twice in the provincial government policy statement itself, and in our London plan, it's very clear that we must be very careful on how we affect existing neighborhoods and being respectful of those neighborhoods.
Thank you. Other comments on the range of items that are before us today? councillor Trossell, go ahead.
Yes, just briefly, I just want to reiterate to everybody that this is not the final vote on anything. There is still a long way to go in this process. The public is going to have the opportunity to weigh in, in a number of ways, and this is a snapshot of where we are to date. So there is nothing that's been determined. So I just think it's important, I just wanted to say that, because I would not be voting for this at this point, but I am very, very pleased with the progress that this council has made sitting in committee.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments on a number of items before us? No? Okay, so the deputy mayor has moved those items. I'm going to open that for voting.
Motion carries fifteen to zero.
Deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm going to put item four, this is four point two from the committee agenda, developing the 2023 to 2027 strategic plan, continuing to set key elements of the strategic plan. And this is specifically with regard to section, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm reading the right section. This is regarding the values statement. So that in subsection C of the Escrib discusses all three draft sets being referred to municipal council meeting of February 2014 for consideration. Colleagues, this is the three lists of value statements where we had our preferential balloting system used. The third and second-place finishers were separated by one vote. The votes moved around during the second round of voting, but we also had two councillors who were unable to participate in that. So rather than go with that single vote, we are here today with all three options before us. While obviously, I'm in council's hands, my suggestion might be that we revisit all three options now with the members of council present in a preferential ranking system, and see where we end up. Of course, if colleagues have had an opportunity to wordsmith and come up with some genius fourth alternative that they want to put on the floor, now would be the time to do that as well. But if we don't have anything in that vein, then I would suggest that we return to our voting system.
Okay, so there's an approach to this, and I want to be cautious, because councillor members get to only speak once at council. So maybe I just want to get colleagues' sense on the way that you'd like to proceed, as perhaps the deputy mayor has suggested. So this won't count as you're speaking. I'm not going to go around, but are councillors generally okay with doing it as we've referred to ourselves, the three options? I will allow for another option to be added. We'll have to type that into the system, so we'll need a few moments. Go through that preferential ranking again, and again, produce a result that would go out for public dialogue, but that can be revisited at the end of the process, like everything else in the strategic plan. So is there general, everybody generally okay with that? No? councillor Trossell, let me know your suggestion then.
Yes, since this is not going to be final in any event, and since the public is still going to have the chance to weigh in on this, I see nothing to be gained by us trying to approve this right now. It's a little piece of the overall, of the overall report, and I think it's fine for what's there to go out for public comment. Furthermore, I don't think we should be wasting, I don't think we should be spending time at this council meeting doing committee work on wordsmithing what's there. That's where this is going to go. I would just send this on, and we'll get some more public feedback, and we'll have the opportunity to revisit this. We do not need to be finalizing this now, or semi-finalizing it now.
Okay, give me a second. I'm going to, go ahead, deputy mayor, and then I'm going to carve out a password.
Sorry, I was just going to suggest what councillor Trossell seems to be suggesting would actually be a referral back to a future SPPC.
So let me, let me make a suggestion that I think achieves the same thing. Given the motion is actually sending out things to the public for continued dialogue, a motion that you can make, councillor, is send all three out for dialogue, which is essentially going to come back to us in as a referral back to the next SPPC when we're going to receive that. And if that passes, that's how C would be amended, to deal with all of them still continuing to be out in the public for dialogue. If it fails, I would entertain an alternate motion to perhaps make a decision on that. So I think that's, really aligns with the way the motion's currently constructed, rather than just a referral, because every, the vision and mission that we've already constituted is going out for public consultation, and so the values could too, even though we don't, you know, have it narrowed down yet, which is essentially leaving them out there. So councillor, if that's the motion you'd like to make, that would be an amendment to part C that would essentially be, send all three out for public consultation, in addition to the mission and vision that is already going there. Well, I'm going to let you move that, and then I'll look for a seconder of that. councillor Hopkins. Okay, so that is moved and seconded. Do colleagues, well, I'll look for any discussion or debate on this. Deputy mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. On the amendment only, I in principle agree with councillor, that committee work should be done at committee, not at council, and we've obviously gone through a lot today, because work was done at committee. However, we referred this to ourselves with no decision, after quite a bit of discussion at committee. I am not comfortable sending all three back out. I've had a public engagement session already on the strategic plan, and I'll tell you what I was hearing from residents, and by the way, I will thank Ms. Cher and Ms. Smith for attending on the weekend at East Lyons, as well as Ms. Wilcox and Mr. Steinberg. It was great to have them there, and answering constituent questions and thoughts. But what people were focused on were the outcomes and the strategies. They were interested in how we were going to get things moving on the issues that mattered to them. And having those outcomes on housing and homelessness, and some strategies for those, that was capturing people's interest. The transportation, we added paratransit into the strategic plan as an expected outcome. There was discussion about that on the weekend. People were paying attention to the strategies. There was very little interest, honestly, in the vision, mission, values piece. Most residents are interested in the nuts and bolts of how we're going to get there. And I don't want to discount the value of the vision, mission, values piece, but I think for most people, they're comfortable with what council decides, from what I've heard from my residents. And the more that we put out for ongoing discussion, the more the muddy, the more the waters are muddied in terms of where we're going to get feedback. I'd really like to continue to focus on the outcomes and strategies with constituents. So I hope that rather than sending this back, we can make a decision today, send out a draft set of values to our residents, and then collect their feedback on that. Although I think if councillors' experiences are like mine, you'll have a lot of people interested in the nuts and bolts, rather than the big-picture framework.
Other speakers to this. councillor Palozza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And at committee, we referred this to council, hoping that we'd have everyone present. We have that exactly tonight. We are doing it okay for time, and it's not, the hour hasn't grown later into the dinner hour yet, so I'm ready to proceed and make a decision on this, or we can get public feedback on something specific.
Okay. Any other speakers to the amendment? No? Okay, so if you vote for the amendment, we'll have an amended motion that will essentially put all three back out for public discussion. If that is defeated, we're going to go through a process of narrowing it down and selecting one that we can put out. And the process we'll use will be non-binding. The motion we'll make after the process will be a binding motion of council, not as a final decision, but as the item that goes out. So on the amendment, which is on sending all three out as part of the public consultation again, we'll open that for voting.
Motion fails. Five to ten.
Okay, we will go through a process of replicating the voting that we did at committee. That is what was referred to us. We have all members of council present, and so for those who recall, you will see all three of the statements up there. You'll be able to pick one. If one gets a majority of council, I would entertain a motion that someone would want to make to put that out for the public consultation as the item. If it doesn't receive a majority, as the system projects, then we would drop the last one off, and we would vote between the remaining two, as we did at committee. Does everybody understand that piece? So if you click current item, for colleagues who are looking for what they are, you should be able to see them listed as items one, two, and three, in their full, written-out way. When we go to the voting, as you know, the system can't really put giant sentences within, so you'll only see the first few parts. So I want to give everybody a moment to read them in the order they are there, one, two, and three, so you can decide how you'd like to support those. When we open them, you'll see the first, I think, seven or eight words of each. So I'll just give a moment, so people can make sure that they're good with what they're putting before them. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance. If anybody needs more time, now's the time to flag it for me. Okay, there's, I just got one request for more time. We're just going to give it a moment. And before I get any questions, there, we can't add the periods in the last one to separate them, they are bullets, I'm sure you can tell where they're separated. So don't worry about that, the formatting will be different. I think everybody's good now, so we'll open that for our decision-making process, which again, is non-binding, but will allow us to see the preferences of council. allow us to see the preferences of council.
Closing the vote. There was no majority and a runoff will be conducted, 1 and 2.
And the votes were 5 for number 1, 7 for number 2, 3 for number 3. So Items 1 and 2 will be revoted and they'll be the only options that you have. Is everybody ready to proceed? Yeah? Okay, we'll open that for voting then.
Closing the vote. The successful item is 2.
And that was 10 to 5 on that one. So I'd look to see if there's a motion to now amend the staff report, which was refer this to council to put Item 2 out for a public consultation. Someone willing to move that? Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Stevenson. Any discussion on making that amendment? No? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 1.
And so now I'll put the main motion as amended on the floor. I'll need a second or because it's as amended. Counselor Pelosi, any discussion on the as amended motion?
No.
No? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Go ahead. And that, Your Worship, concludes the ninth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. Okay, it's been 3 hours and 5 minutes. I'm going to ask colleagues if they'd like to take a 15-minute recess, given there's a few planning items that we're likely going to debate and discuss. So I'll look for a motion for a 15-minute recess. Moved by Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Ferreira. We -- we'll do this by hand. All those in favor of a 15-minute recess?
No motion carries.
Okay, we'll see you back at 3:20.
Thank you, colleagues. You can be seated. Okay. Thank you for taking that short break. I know, I realize everybody I think in the room corrected me that it wasn't three hours. It was only two hours. Felt like three hours with you guys, though. We're on the Planning Committee agenda, so item 8.6, the third report of Planning and Environment Committee, I will turn it over to Counselor Lehman to present that report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to put the third report of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. I will pull number 10, which is 49 Upper Queen Street. I've had no other requests for any other items to be pulled.
Counselor Van Meierberg.
Yes, I'd like... Number 11, if that could be pulled separately as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Right now, we have 10 and 11 dealt with separately. Okay. I'll go back to you, Counselor, to make a motion.
So before I put those items on the floor, I will read this. It being noted that any and all written submissions relating to applications that were made to the Planner on File, the Planning and Environment Committee, and to the Municipal Council, as well as oral submissions made at the public meeting held under the Planning Act, have been on balance taken into consideration by council as part of its deliberations regarding these matters. So I will put all items except for number 10 and number 11 on the floor.
Okay, so items one through nine and 12 are on the floor. Any discussion or questions, comments on those? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open those items for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to zero.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. As I did not support number 10, I will look to the Vice Chair back to put that item on the floor.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will put the committee recommendation on the floor. It being noted that any and all written submissions related to the application were made to the Planner on File, the Planning and Environment Committee, and to Municipal Council, as well as oral submissions made at the public meeting held under the Planning Act, have been on balance taken into consideration by council as part of its deliberations regarding these matters.
Okay, so that item and the committee recommendation is on the floor. I will look for discussion. Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As this one falls within Ward 12, I just want to highlight a few things. This was a split vote at committee, three to two in favor. This is an infill project in Ward 12 on Upper Queen Street by Commissioners Road. It's for what's currently zoned as a single-family home, now having 10 townhomes on it. If it was 11 townhomes, it would go through site plan, as the promise has now removed that. There is no site plan for it. Residents still have outstanding questions of where the waste is going to be taken care of onsite or at the curb. As it's curb-facing, it could be potentially blocking the sidewalk. This is Collector Street through our neighborhood, used by cyclists and pedestrians alike, as there is a bus route and cycle lanes. There's concern still with some visitor parking or deliveries, recognizing that there's no side street parking in the area, as there is no side streets, and there is no parking out front, as you'd be parking in a cycling lane. So reminder to people, please don't stop or park in those. Residents, do you want the info? It's a blank, empty lot in the neighborhood, which doesn't help for connectivity or the look of the neighborhood. I reached out to the planners today, and they still can't comment on what building materials they're going to be using, if it's vinyl siding versus brick. Just realizing it is an upscale neighborhood with brick homes with a lot of unique architecture, and they have concerns about the home not fitting, or the townhomes not fitting in with the overall aesthetics of the neighborhood, making sure it places in with that. They do recognize as residents that it is underutilized parcel of land, and they do want regeneration in this area. They do support mix of housing types within their neighborhood, but they're concerned that it does not align aesthetically with the neighborhood, being the London Plan, that ensuring new development are a good fit within existing neighborhoods. That the frontage of the property doesn't align to the south end. The home, as you can see on page 261, is actually in the backyard of the front row of townhomes. Residents are also reporting that some of them are getting unsolicited offers from realtors who would want to buy more properties in the neighborhood and flip them over based on council's consideration of this. A home just sold up the street from this, and there's also a vacant lot, just kitty quarter to it. As this is the first development of its type that's come before council, residents are even more concerned that this really is setting the new standard of what residents can expect in established neighborhoods, that they believe it's, as do I, that it's over intensification for a single lot, and if the homes start being bought up in these neighborhoods and then seeking demolition, or demolition by neglect, to start flipping over neighborhoods, that's really the big concern, that it's going to start changing the character of these neighborhoods. So I'm asking you to vote no on this, and I would put an alternate motion forward at that time to ask staff to come back and work with developers for something of less intensification. Realizing we don't have those site plan controls anymore, residents really are concerned about the tone that we're setting, realizing there is a housing crisis in 47 of the homes we're trying to build, but if neighborhoods start being demolished in established neighborhoods, that's their concern, as mine. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Lehman next.
Thank you, Chair. I did not support this at planning. As Counselor Pelosi said, there are a number of concerns here, and let's start with Bill 23, removing a site plan approval for developments 10 units or less where this falls on there. So there's no approval process for the look and feel of the building. There's no approval process for how garbage, snow removal will happen, or landscaping. But besides that, there are other concerns. This property will be a paved surface parking lot, and this has no affordable housing aspect to it. I think, and it goes to what Counselor Van Meierberg said earlier. The London Plan does call for infill and high density. However, there is the other side to that, and there is that recognition of the need to maintain the characteristics of a neighborhood and of a street. And I fundamentally believe that this project does not maintain that of this street. Will it affect our goal of achieving 47,000 homes if this is not approved today and it comes back and reapplied with five homes? No. There's no affordable housing aspect to it either, as I mentioned earlier. And I read as well that this is somehow precedent-setting, that if this was sent back to the developer, was not approved today, that somehow there goes all our plans for infill and for high density. I couldn't disagree more with that. Every project in my five years on council, when there is development, there is heated debate with the public and with counselors on that particular development. And the London Plan has put this in our laps. It is a judgment call, and what is the characteristic of a neighborhood, and how does the development affect that? For better or for worse, that's what we're charged with. So we've had to make decisions in the past on applicability, I guess, if that's a word, of developments. So what do we do? Well, we listen to staff, because staff examine it thoroughly, and 98% of the time, we agree with that. But there's a reason we have a council. If we just went ahead with every staff recommendation, what are we here for? We're here to add sober second thought and debate on certain issues, and I think this is one of them. So for the reasons that I said, I will not support this particular development, and I encourage my fellow colleagues to do the same.
Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I voted for this at committee, and I'm rising to speak and encourage colleagues to absolutely support this today. First of all, our goal of 47,000 homes is not about 47,000 units of affordable housing. It's about housing across all price points, because housing is a continuum. People do need to be able to have starter homes. Those are often townhomes when they move into a new home for the first time. They need to be able to move through that continuum. I'm going to respectfully disagree with the Ward Counselor, and I don't do that very often, but I'll tell you that the tone and the content of the emails I received was not that the neighborhood supports mixed housing options in their neighborhood. It was actually very, very clear. We want single-family homes only. When we had our public participation meeting, we had a gentleman stand up in the gallery and say this would be a great spot for two or three million-dollar homes. And I said this at committee, and I'm going to say it again. We don't need more million-dollar homes. We need more homes, period, and we need more affordable homes in particular. But as we hear about this being too intense, let's take for just a moment the consideration that we would allow this to be severed into three single-family homes. Well, under right of permission now, there is allowed three units, one accessory dwelling, that could be a secondary dwelling unit, and you could also have another dwelling in the main building. So even if we subdivided it into three single-family homes, you are still talking about a potential of nine units on this property as a right of permission. And this application is for 10 townhomes. I had a resident challenge me that if this was happening in your neighborhood, you would absolutely vote no. And my response was, no, I would absolutely vote yes, because my neighborhood already has this. I can walk less than 500 meters from my front door and have three-story walk-ups in my neighborhood. And if I walk a little bit farther at the end of my street, I don't have 10 townhomes. Actually, I have 200. I have three complexes of townhomes. And those residents are just as valuable and just as welcome in my community as the people living in single-family homes. So I absolutely dismiss that this is too intense for this lot. As a right of permission, we could have nine units there. The original application had 11 units, and it was reduced down at our staff's request to accommodate pedestrian accessway. And I support that active transportation piece, but that's the trade-off that we make when we're fitting that in, that we've now given up the site plan approval process, which, if it was one unit larger, we would have. But that is, as was pointed out, provincial legislation. We don't control that, nor do our staff. So we have to work within the parameters that we have given to us by the province as well, through the Planning Act and its associated acts. I also think it's really important to touch on the character of the neighborhood. Two-story townhouses, two stories. We're not talking about a six-story apartment building staring down into people's backyards. You go through a residential town, a residential development, a subdivision in a lot of communities, and you have a mix of ranch and two-story dwellings already. And that's certainly not creating an issue in those communities. So to say that two stories is out of character, I respectfully can't support that thesis. We also heard a lot about transportation issues. Counselor Pelosi mentioned the bike lanes and the pedestrian access. Mitch's Park is about 700 meters away from this site. There's a good community green space that I hope people will walk and cycle to. But this neighborhood collector-level street, and I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong through you, Your Worship, but I believe this is designated as a primary collector, and it, currently, traffic volumes are over 12,500 on average every day. So when I hear that this is going to be traffic chaos, because 10 townhouses are going to be built there, again, it's just not supported by math. It's not supported by facts. Even if we accept 2.5 trips per day from each townhome, we're only talking about 25 additional vehicle trips on a road that's already hosting 12,500 a day. That's not changing the road capacity. It's not even going to change the classification. It's not going to bump up to artery. So for all of those reasons, I really encourage colleagues to support this. This is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. It is not violating the London Plan, and it is going to create some housing that's still probably going to cost half a million dollars to get into a townhome. But it is an option for people who are looking for that place to start, and it's a great neighborhood to do it. So I hope when it is approved, that residents will welcome folks into this neighborhood.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I too supported this at planning. I did hear from the Ward Counselor that there could be a possibility of a referral. I know we're speaking to the motion right now. And I would like to, through you, go to staff on the timelines that we have here for not only appealing, but if we at council do not make a decision, can the applicant appeal this? Or what are the timelines that we have right now?
Go ahead. Counselor Hopkins, we need your mic.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Worship. In terms of the timeline, the Bill 109 timelines, that is not affected. It's not a new application, so that those would not be implicated. There is a chance of appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal, but that's with any application beyond the decision point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, because this is probably one of the first of many to come. This is not going to be the first 10-unit application that's going to come to planning, to make a decision that will not go through the site plan process, and so we have a bit of time here. I'm not going to be, I am, again, going to be supporting the application, and I know we've heard from the community their concerns, but this is what I understand with this application. The applicant came in three-story, two and a half, and now we're down to two, which is a two-story, single home even. And I know the community wants single homes. That's what we're hearing. The reality is, we're not going to get single homes here. So we're So where can we go with this? It's, with this application, it is, we're locking everything in. We're locking the height. We're locking in the density, which is about 36 units per hectare. What is allowed on the site is 60 units per hectare. We're locking it in at 36, so the applicant will not be able to intensify, go up with the height. It's an underutilized lot. You know how many applications we have come forward and will continue to come forward when we have lots that do not have a number of trees? It's underutilized. There's not going to be too much being removed from this property. I really do think this council should, I want to encourage you definitely to support the recommendation. And if you are not, please remind yourselves there are going to be some more coming forward. So if you are going to say no to this, how are we going, are you going to continue to say no with the many applications that are going to be coming forward that I'm aware of? So I just want us to be really cautious and understand really the intensity and the height we're locking everything in right now. And I would really encourage you, as difficult as this may be, for the change that the community is going to be experiencing, this to me is medium. It's gentle intensification. Thank you.
Other speakers. Counselor Trosaw.
Through the chair, question for staff. This, to me, is exactly the kind of project where site plan review would be useful. I know that it's no longer required. Are there elements of a site plan that are not cut off by the legislation, which we can, which we can, which your office can try to address? And I'm talking about things that are very specifically within unquestionable municipal jurisdiction, like the streets and safety. It just seems as if the provincial government is doing so much damage to our internal ability. And I just want to make sure there isn't some little piece of this we can save, because I think some good site plan questions have been raised.
Mr. Mayers.
Through you, worship, there are limited things that we can do to be able to support. Firstly, we reach out to the folks that are actually undertaking this review. Our expectation is that they're having people with appropriate expertise, professional engineers that are looking at many aspects of the plans, be able to ensure that they're not causing problems. We can provide them with the best and appropriate information from the city side, similarly like what we do as part of a site plan. And also any kind of interaction with the right-of-way. So if they do need to have access to the right-of-way, that's something that we do have an ability to be able to provide some feedback on and monitor. However, we are very much limited by these new changes to what we can look at. So we will do what's appropriate, but we really do have a lot of reliance on the applicant and their ability to ensure that they're doing what's in the public interest.
One follow-up.
Counselor, go ahead.
To what extent does, going to a different department now, to what extent does the traffic engineer retain authority to say this is just not a safe way to be getting, coming in and out of this property?
Go ahead.
Your worship, I'll attempt to answer that, because I don't believe Bill 23 specifies anything related to transportation. We have the authority to manage intersections as they connect with our roads, to ensure that they are safely designed, that they're set off far enough away from the most adjacent intersection, those sorts of issues. On a project that's generally not subject to site plan under 10 units, there would not be traffic concerns that would be of significance to our department.
Counselor, good. Okay. Other speakers on this. Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you. I'm just wondering if you could speak to the parking that was included in this particular plan. I'm noting that this is above the given parking standards. Just wondering if you can comment. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, worship. Yes, the minimum parking standards are achieved through this site development. They are actually above, they're doubling. One parking space in the garage and one space on their, within their unit count. There are four visitor parking spaces as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And the concerns about that being excess at all?
Go ahead.
Through you, your worship, excess is something that, these are people that are wanting to live in these homes. A lot of people have two cars in a family, and this is that model that, in this case, the developer is choosing to go for. But from a city perspective, they're meeting the minimum standards of the parking, on-site parking standards.
Okay, good. Other speakers. Okay, so what's before us is the recommendation coming from committee, which is moved. We've had the debate. I'm going to open that recommendation from committee for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 11 to 4.
Deputy Mayor, I assume you can go back to the chair?
I will hand the chair back to Counselor Lehman.
Counselor Lehman, back to you.
Thank you, and I will put number 11. And I will have to read this again, so bear with me. It being noted that any and all written submissions relating to applications that were made to the plan are in file, the Planning Environment Committee, and to the municipal council, as well as oral submissions made at the public held under the Planning Act have been on balance taken into consideration by council as part of its deliberations regarding these matters. So I will put that on the floor.
Okay, chairs, put the committee recommendation on the floor. I'll look for discussions or comments. Counselor Van Meierburgen.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, I was kind enough to give each of you basically a photograph with how this proposal will look in this neighborhood. I would submit this is suitable for framing on what not to do when we talk about infill and increasing densities and so forth. As I stated earlier, and what Counselor Lehman also restated, it's very clear in the London Plan that we have to respect the abutting neighborhoods, the adjoining neighborhoods. The provincial policy statement makes very clear as well, the right type of housing in the right area. And we must show respect to the existing neighborhoods and sensitivity. Now, this is the exact opposite of respect to an existing neighborhood. There's 95 units. We're not talking about 10 townhouses. 95 units on one acre of land. This acre, as you can see from what I handed out, currently has 125 trees. Only four will remain after this project possibly gets a go-ahead, or if it does. But you can clearly see here how it just does not fit. It's in violation of the London Plan, and it's in violation of the provincial policy statement. Clearly, I think simply logic and common sense dictates that this is the wrong building in the wrong spot. It's too much. We hear words like gentle intensification. This is the opposite. I would submit this is extreme intensification, given what's there at the moment and what has been there for decades. As you can see in the photograph, Commissioners is just a small two-lane road which adjoins West Mount Crescent, which is also a very small local street. And there it sits, this wall, this block. It's wrong. It's simply wrong. And that, as Counselor Lehman pointed out, our job as a council is to look at these things as second sober thought and say to ourselves, no, this can't go. This one is a nonstarter. The neighborhood circulated a petition which 120, 122 residents signed. When I went through there during the election, not one person supports this. And yet, here it is. We're just simply trying to ride roughshod, if this goes ahead, on the sensibilities of this neighborhood. So what I would propose is a referral. I would like to move a referral back to planning staff to work with the applicant on lower densities and lower height and bring it back if the applicant so chooses. But that would be my referral. Now, some will say, oh, well, it already was referred. Well, yes, that's true. It went back to look primarily at transportation issues, an entrance, why isn't the entrance going off Commissioners versus West Mount Crescent? But no, this referral is to deal with the very substance of the problem. And that is, it's too big, too much, in the wrong spot. Again, against the provincial policy statement, against the London Plan. And so I would ask for your support for this referral. And I believe I have a seconder, but let us, if I could just have a couple secs.
Well, let me pause and get your referral on the floor, and then you can speak to the referral. I've stopped your time while I do that. So is there a seconder for the referral? Counselor Cuddy, you willing to second? Okay, I see Counselor Hillier as well, so we'll take Counselor Cuddy. So your referral of this matter is on the floor, so you can continue speaking.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get your time going.
So I thank the seconder for putting this on the floor. I think this is just a sensible, common sense approach to how to deal with this. It could be a very good building, but it's not in the right spot. It's not the right type of housing in the right location. So again, violation of the provincial policy statement and a violation of the London Plan. I would ask that you would support this referral, support the neighborhood. I should also add that this particular neighborhood already has three very recent intensification projects right, in fact, one of them's right across the street with 20 townhomes. So these haven't had really any pushback. They've been accepted by this community, these three other infill projects. But this one's beyond the pale. It's over the top, and I would ask for your basic, common sense vote on referring this back to come up with something better and more suitable.
Okay, Counselor, we have wording on the referral. I just want to ensure that the mover and the seconder, it aligns with what you said, that the application for 608 Commissioners Road West, and then the planning file number, be referred back to Civic Administration in order to work with the applicant to bring forward a revised proposed bylaw that would reduce the proposed density.
Reduce height and density, right.
Okay. We'll add height. Counselor Cuddy, you seconded it. Are you okay with the height and density?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll get that worded the way you like. As soon as it's updated, you can refresh your screens, make sure you're okay with it. So now we're on the referral, so we'll have debate on the referral that has been put on the floor. I have Counselor Hopkins first.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I appreciate the Ward councillor's efforts to refer this back. It's already been referred back for access. We had that come back to us, and this is where we are today. I'm only going to speak on the referral, and I want to make sure we are not misinformed here as a committee, and I'd like to go through you to staff, to our staff, are we violating the London Plan and the provincial policy statement with this application?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, worship. In the staff recommendation, and it's our opinion that it's in conformity with the London Plan and consistent with the provincial policy statement.
Counselor Hopkins.
And with that, I will not be supporting the referral.
Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I too will not be supporting the referral. I did support the referral back earlier, in an earlier iteration at committee to look at the access point. I thought that was a legitimate question that the neighborhood had, and we've looked at it, and we were advised that that's not feasible from a traffic perspective and transportation perspective. I do want to ask through you, particularly because this referral speaks specifically to the height, the density piece is in there, but I want to specifically address the height, and through you to our staff, along Commissioners Road, which is an arterial road, is six stories not already permitted under the London Plan, given the place type.
Go ahead.
Through you, worship, yes, that's correct, and it's within keeping, and it is a higher-order street called the Civic Boulevard, but it's an arterial road classification.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I know we've got a number of different names we apply to road classifications, so I was hoping the arterial would capture that. So colleagues, I really want to emphasize, six stories is already allowed, and we've got height in the referral. I'm not supporting the referral. I think we've had lots of discussion on this. I know, I understand that the neighborhood doesn't like it, but an arterial road is exactly the place where we should be looking for the height and density as we build, not just in, but up. And so I'm prepared to vote no to the referral and move back to the committee recommendation.
I have Counselor Trosaw next.
Very similar to the question that I raised on the last item. Is there something specific, and not in compliance with the London Plan, but is there something very, very specific that would benefit from further discussion if there is a referral back?
Go ahead.
Through you, your worship, there would just be another conversation with the applicant, but at the end of the day, unless there's clear language from the direction from council to actually explicitly identify a height, the recommendation would likely be the same recommendation from staff.
Other speakers. Okay, so you have a motion to refer, Counselor? Oh, if it's about the wording in the motion, sure, yes, go ahead.
So I think what I've heard is it would be preferable to have some type of a number on what the height would be. Could I ask staff if that would be helpful, if we have direction as to what the maximum height would be?
Counselor, the staff are probably not going to suggest anything different than what's in the London Plan, given that's the city's official plan. So I think if you're thinking of a number, it would be incumbent upon you or council to decide that.
Oh, no, I would give the number. I'm just wondering if that would be helpful, if there is a number.
I think what, I will let staff answer that question. Mr. Mayers. We need your microphone, Counselor.
Oh, sorry.
Through you, worship, in any situation where council may have differing thoughts than staff, it's always extremely useful to have some specific direction. So if it's a height or something specific that you're looking for, that will help us to be able to bring something back and work with the applicant. So anything that's specific, it would be helpful.
Counselor?
Well, then I would insert no higher than four stories and no more than 64 units, because that would be the formula they're using now with the six stories.
Give me one sec. So I'm going to allow that if the seconder's okay with that. But I am going to caution colleagues that the reason why I'll allow it is because the mover and the seconder could essentially withdraw the motion and put a new referral on that says this. But I would suggest, if you're going to bring But I would suggest, if you're going to bring some specifics, I prefer not to, particularly at council, make a motion, reword the motion, reword the motion, and reword the motion. So I'm going to allow this because there is a way that you, a path that you could actually do this, and I understand that it's trying to find a compromise, as long as the seconder's okay with that specific language. If not, you have to decide whether or not you're withdrawing your second.
Your worship, with all due respect, I think I'll withdraw my second for that. I'm not comfortable with the rewording at the moment, but I think the councilor has a seconder with another councilor. Counselor Hillier, I believe, is going to second it.
Yeah, so...
I'm going to withdraw.
The seconder's not comfortable with the changes you're making, Counselor, so if you want to add that specifics, I'm going to have to ask you if you've got a seconder for that. Counselor Hillier is willing to take over the seconder. So we'll put that specific language in. I need to know if there's any other speakers to the amendment. And I don't want to have you wrap up. No, I think that's not a thing. We do allow, under the procedure bylaw, responding to specific things that were raised in the debate, but there is no general wrap-up allowed at council once you put the motion on the floor.
I just want to...
If you're responding to something specific raised in the debate, that's allowed. It's called a reply.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that putting in the specifics is helpful for staff.
Yes, I think Mr. Maythers said that, but I'll allow him to confirm.
That's correct. Okay, thanks.
You can use your microphone.
Through your worship, it is helpful when there's a differing opinion between council and staff's recommendation.
Okay, so a referral moved and seconded. It now has very specific language on maximum of height of four stories and a maximum density of 64 units. It's moved and seconded. We've had the debate. I'm going to open this for voting. This is on the referral.
The motion is lost, five to 10.
Okay, back to the main motion, which is moved by the Chair. Any further debate on the main motion? Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I know we've heard loud and clear from the community the challenges with this application, but I also understand that there's numerous applications happening in the community, and I understand their concerns. And one of the things, I guess I'm going to hopefully, council will see this as a friendly amendment, given the challenges with the trees in the area that are coming down. We heard, I think it's around 125, we're taking down 118. We already approved a further application just west of this at the last council. You know, the loss of canopy, the changes that the community will experience, I think, are real, and I would like to suggest just a friendly amendment to be added as a, by adding the following new part V11, providing privacy fencing or a quick growing coniferous hedge to the south and west boundaries. And I guess before I proceed, I should ask for a seconder?
Yes, so it won't be a friendly amendment, it'll be an amendment to this, so I would look for a seconder on that. Deputy Mayor Lewis is willing to second that. Okay, so now we're speaking on Counselor Hopkins' amendment, so I'll let you proceed, and then I'll start the speakers list on the amendment.
Yeah, and just before I proceed, I would like to go through you to staff to get staff's comments, and this particularly relates to the southwestern boundaries on the property with the number of residential backyards that will be abutting this application. There's going to be a great loss of trees, and obviously, there's going to be further conversations around the border trees that may have to come down, but there's a lot of trees coming down there. And I do think from a privacy and buffering point that an ability to have fencing or some kind of hedging there that stays green all year round may, you know, help that privacy. So just would like to hear from staff.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, through your worship. Yes, it is pretty tight along that south edge that you're speaking of, and privacy fencing and some fast-growing vegetation. It'd be pretty much a hedgerow that would be the outcome in terms of the landscape treatment along that boundary.
Thank you for that, and with that, I did support this at planning. It has affordable units. That gives it the density. I do like the tiering of the building. It's going from six to five, and then on the West Mount Crescent side, going down to four. There is parking there, but there is going to be little space for opportunities to enhance major landscaping, so anything that we can do to add to the privacy of the neighborhood. And I am sympathetic to the challenges that the neighborhood is going to experience, but we do need these infill projects, and again, this is medium density that is coming forward, so I am supportive.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess I'll wait for...
Sure. Thanks. So your amendment's on the floor. I have it seconded, and the language is up, if you just want to make sure that that aligns with how you wanted it worded. Deputy Mayor Lewis, I had you on the main speakers list. Do you want, is this now an amendment speaker? You'll wait for the main? Okay. Any speakers on the amendment, then? Okay, the amendment is worded that Part A be amended by adding the following new part VII, provide privacy fencing or quick growing coniferous hedge on, to the south and west boundaries. So that's the amendment. Okay, I see no further discussions, so let's vote on the amendment.
Motion carries, 15 to 0.
So I now need a mover for the main motion as amended. Counselor Lehman, you were presenting the committee report. You still willing to move it? Okay, Counselor Hopkins is willing to second it, so the as amended motion is now on the floor. Deputy Mayor Lewis, you're next on the main speakers list.
Thank you, your worship. I'll be brief. I'm mainly rising because I clicked the votes button too quickly on the previous referral. I'm not going to make colleagues go through the process of a reconsideration. It was still defeated, so my wrong vote can just stay in the record, but I am going to correct that by voting in favor of this application as we have on the floor now. I supported it at a committee, and I will support it again today.
That's okay. Thanks for that clarification and for not making us go through the process of reconsideration. I have no other speakers on the main speakers list except for Counselor Frank. Go ahead.
Thank you, yes. And I just wanted to speak because I did support this at committee, and I'll be supporting it here as well. And I want to tell kind of maybe a little bit longer of a story, but I saved all my comments for my one time, so I want to share a bit about why I'm kind of making some of these decisions about infill more generally. I grew up in Georgetown, which, if you guys aren't familiar with it, it's a smaller GTA town towards Toronto, about 42,000 people, and I moved to London in 2009 to come to university, and every time I'd go back and visit my parents, it seemed like a concession line of farmland would be gobbled up for new subdivisions. And every time I went to go visit, it took longer to get there because they lived in the middle of the town. There's more traffic, there are more cars, and every time I came back to London, I started to notice the same thing was happening here. Even though I didn't grow up in London, I started to notice that because I've been here for a while, and I started to see, again, more and more subdivisions crawling towards the 401 and the edges of the city. It took me longer and longer and longer to get back to my home. So I'm finding with these infill discussions that we've been having, we really want to focus on changing how we are growing, because we only have, as much as it seems like in Canada, we have infinite land to develop. We do not. In London and surrounding area, we are surrounded by farmland, and in Canada, in southwest Ontario, some of the prime agricultural land is in our area, in our neighborhood, and I do find it to be quite worrisome how much farmland we are consuming for housing. So in general, these infill applications that are coming in, I understand that there are people that are opposing them, and I commend them for getting involved in the civic engagement. A lot of their comments are informing changes that staff are making, and we have seen reductions as well as changes in parking and locations for driveways. So their input is being heard, and it is being reflected on, and is being incorporated into these developments. The issue with urban sprawl and gobbling up farmland is that no one lives there except for, you know, maybe a couple houses within a concession line, so we don't hear the same kind of pushback that comes to council. So for those reasons, I'm supportive of this project as well as the one that was passed earlier, because I do want to live in a city that is building inwards and upwards, and I do want to make sure that we are reducing our emissions, and building infill uses existing services, it's cheaper to service, it's better on our tax bill, it's not going to hit our operating budget as much as having to build new sewers and new roads and new libraries at the edges of the city. So that all being said, like I mentioned earlier, I truly appreciate the engagement of citizens, and I am sorry that they do not feel heard because we got quite a few emails on both these reports. I do think that the work that we've done through the campaigning, and at least the work in my ward, I knocked on over 14,000 doors, and I heard loud and clear that people want more housing options, and I do think that that is, those are some of the voices that I'm listening to in making this decision. So I do appreciate both of the Ward Councilors' discussions with their constituents, and appreciate the work that they're doing, but I will be supporting this, and just want to share that.
Thank you, Counselor Frank. Counselor Prible.
Through the Chair to the staff, my question to the staff is in terms of the future and kind of the strategic thinking. Within one kilometer, there are really honestly right now about five projects right now that we are going to be, we have approved or we are going to be approving. Are we looking really kind of in terms of the land use, in terms of where the developers are building, because there's a good fair chance that we will need wider roads. Hopefully, we are going to start bringing the hydro, or not us, together with hydro, underground sidewalks. And are we really keeping in this mind, because once we approve it, it's much more difficult to go back to the developers. This is the time to negotiate with them, right? And are we keeping this mind? Are we taking these steps? As I said, this is really a crucial part of one kilometer with five projects, maybe six. Thank you.
Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, and we'll lean on other folks if they do want to add in, because this really is something that impacts various areas of the city. So in a previous report, on your agenda is what we talked about, our housing supply plan, and some very substantial pieces of that that allow for growth to recur, one is having that infrastructure. That's really key, whether it's in intensification or in new areas outside of the intensification areas. We need to make sure that we have that appropriate level of existing infrastructure and also new infrastructure. So we have a couple ways we do that. One is through our development charges process, and if Annalisa has anything to add on that, she can add to it as well. So that allows us to know that we have a plan for how we're going to provide for the new residents for the city. There are some new constraints that might be on that coming from the provincial changes, but we're here to be able to try to work through that. And as well, we have our existing city and allowing for, ensuring that when we do our upgrades to any of our infrastructure, and that will be Kelly's area, of course, that we're looking at trying to make sure that we can provide people with appropriate servicing as well if we're renewing it at that time. So a number of different issues that align with this. One thing that is, as well as also the shared approach, is our growth management limitation strategy that will allow us to know that in the short term that we're growing appropriately, and you'll be able to see that coming forward in the coming months.
Counselor, you're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have myself on the speakers list next, so maybe I can turn the chair over to Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, recognizing the mayor.
Thank you, colleagues, for the debate. I didn't really weigh in on the previous one, but I'll make some comments that probably apply to both on this. I want to thank colleagues for the debate, and particularly those who are raising and sharing the concerns of the communities that are impacted by what will be ongoing very difficult decisions for us in the community to have. As was heard on this particular one, this does align with the official plan and the direction that we're going, and that official plan was developed before we even had the housing pressures that we see in our city. We will continue to face challenges like this. In some neighborhoods, it may be the first of many, and I know that means that the first project may stand out. If you look at the London Plan, it contemplates a significant change along many corridors of the city, and there's going to be a first project, and then there's going to be a second project, and there's going to be a third project, and the city is going to transform. Even the downtown of the city, once upon a time, didn't have high-density residential towers many, many years ago. Cities transform over time, and those transformations happen because of pressures and housing needs and population coming forward. And as Counselor Frank mentioned, you know, we have several ways that we can grow as a city. One of the ways that we've committed to in both our official plan as well as moving towards in our plan to try to meet the commitments to the province is through intensification, and that will be an increasingly important part of us being able to meet the housing for the people who are going to come and want to live in our city, and for the people here who are already struggling with affordability because we simply don't have enough housing options on the market. So I think these will be the first of many discussions we'll have as a council. I think what I do appreciate is that although we had differences of opinions today, we shared those respectfully and thoughtfully with great points, and we're going to come to some decisions, but I will certainly be supporting these sorts of developments when they come forward. It aligns with the vision that I've shared with the city through the campaign. It aligns with the direction that the province is going. It aligns with the fact that our city is a desirable place for people to come right now as one of the fastest-growing cities in the province and the country. And to do that and to continue to make this an affordable city, that others will have the opportunity to enjoy a place to live, whether that's purpose-built rental housing or some of the opportunities for ownership, we're going to have to continue to have these discussions, and I anticipate Mr. Maythers and his team are going to be very busy in answering lots of questions like they did today at council, and so certainly I also thank them for all of their work. And of course, all of the dialogue that happens between Ward Councilors and developers and staff and developers to try to find proposals that when they come with a staff recommendation, have had some extensive dialogue already built into it to try to find that reasonable path forward that council can accept. And Counselor Lehman, in a previous discussion, is absolutely right. Council does have the final say and final authority, and I'm sure 97.8% of the time we're going to agree with staff, and the other time is why we have a council to bring some thoughtful other direction that maybe is based on some other concerns rather than just the planning criteria. So I want to just thank colleagues for the discussion today. I will be supporting the motion, and I think we'll be doing this time and again, but thank you for a respectful, thoughtful, the respectful and thoughtful points that you brought forward.
Thank you. I return Chair for you with saying no further hands at this moment.
Any other speakers? Counselor Van Meerebruggen on the amended motion. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have to state one more time, it's all about type of housing and location. Not too far down the street from where I live, five large towers are going up with 1,300 units. The community had virtually no pushback on that because it was the right housing in the right area. I'm not that far down from this particular corner, maybe about a kilometer or so, but this is 95 units, and in contrast to 1,300, it's not a lot. But for this one little corner with its 125 trees and all single-family homes with no rises, no commercial, this is wrong. It's too much. You can have intensification, significant intensification, without going overboard. This is overboard. I would just simply ask you to vote this down.
Any other speakers on the as amended motion? Okay, it looks like we've concluded the debate. I'm going to open this for voting.
But I'm prepared to put all the rest of the committee report on the floor.
Okay, so that's everything except item 5, which is the surplus land component. Any questions or comments on that part of the committee agenda? Okay, so we'll open that selection of votes for approval.
Motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, councillor Trosseau, I'll ask you, as vice chair, you can rise and put item 5 on the floor.
Yes, thank you. I would like to put item 5 on the floor.
Okay, item 5. Is there any discussion or questions? Deputy Mayor Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. So now that we've got this on the floor, I did not support this at committee. This is a referral back to staff to circulate additional notice on declaring a piece of city land surplus. When our staff bring forward a recommendation to declare a land surplus, it's not without a considerable amount of work that's gone into things behind the scenes in the first place. At committee, we did hear from, and I think through you, chair, for the sake of all those involved in making this decision this afternoon, perhaps we could ask Mr. Dickens if he can outline some of the concerns that we have had around staff having to work in and around this piece of land that's been declared surplus. I think that may be helpful for committee to hear.
Mr. Dickens.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. Some of the concerns that have been brought forward with this parcel of land have originated through our calls for the coordinated informed response team to respond to individuals that are sleeping rough in this area. With the tree cover that's in that space, and with some of the sightline difficulties, it has been a challenge to not only access the space in a safe way, but also unsure about what you encounter when you're in there. So the space is not typically utilized for anything beyond issues that we're responding to on a complaint basis. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I thought it was really important for folks to hear that this is a site where some safety considerations are being raised, even though we are not using the land for anything. And this actually is somebody's backyard behind a fence. So I get very, and it's also a very small parcel of property, by the way, if folks have read the report. This is not a whole lot of square footage. You're not building a building there to start offering services. And so I get really concerned when we're going to circulate it back out to agencies beyond the required distribution that would have gone out in advance of this to the immediate property owners. Well, we work very closely with a number of agencies in the city on their needs through Mr. Dickens' department, and certainly a number of those have been involved in the Housing and Homelessness Summit, too. The moment that we start second-guessing our realty services staff on whether or not we're using the land, I get concerned. Because I get concerned that we are basically moving towards directing staff to find a specific use or a specific buyer for it. And without some, without a partner having come forward already to express interest in this, while I recognize that the response may still come back, that we still declare it surplus, I really just think that we are, quite frankly, at this point, micromanaging our property, our realty services staff. And I also get concerned when we start talking about the fact that this is municipal land that's being used as encampments, and if we want to refer this back, we are, I think, starting to move down a fairly slippery slope in terms of whether or not we're designating areas where we're recommending this behavior is allowed, outside of the areas where we already are working through our coordinated informed response and our by law enforcement and community partners, London Cares and others, to respond when these concerns arise. When we hear that we can't send staff safely in to respond to complaints, that to me is a big red flag. So I hope that we can actually defeat the committee recommendation, and if that's the case, then I am going to put the original staff recommendation on the floor to declare this surplus.
Councillor Ferrera.
And thank you, and through you. I originally supported this motion, and the understanding was, is from what I saw, is we would be reaching out to community organizations, not necessarily to build, because it is, I think, about 1,300 square feet, something very small, but just for some type of community works or projects. You know, I know, I think it was Old East Village did have the tree nursery there originally. So that's what was my intent, when we wanted to reach out to organizations, just to see if there's any type of use that they would like for that. On top of that, it was my idea, or it was my intention, that if no organization did reach out for proper use, I did want to have some type of first right of refusal for the property owner whose backyard does back onto that, because I do feel that they should have, if no one steps up saying that they have any use, any of the organizations, that they would have the first right to actually extend their backyard. So that's why I was supporting the motion originally, and I still do support it now, just because I would like to see, not necessarily to build, but if there's any type of community work or project that could be done from the organizations on that land. That was the intent for my support. So thanks.
Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you. I appreciate and support the comments of the deputy mayor on this. This piece of property does fall within Ward 4. People that I've spoken to in that area agree with the concerns and with the city's recommendations. I will be voting no for this and support the staff recommendation.
Any other speakers? Councillor Trosseau.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because I thought, anyway. I put this forward at the committee as an amendment. It passed the committee 3 to 2. My intention is not to second-guess the staff, it's not to second-guess realty services. It's merely and only to broaden the group of people who get notice for these things. Right now, it does not go, it does not go to certain stakeholders that may or may not have an issue, have an issue here. This is merely, merely and only, an attempt to sort of do a little bit more outreach in terms of these types of determinations. So this is merely and only, an attempt to give a few more nonprofits that may or may not be interested, the opportunity to respond to these generally. Now, at the committee, I took care to ask the staff whether this would create any burden. They said no. I took care to ask the staff whether the delay in letting this go through another sequence of committee would cause any prejudice. They said no. So in all fairness, I think that this is made, this is being made into a much bigger issue than it really is, and we in all likelihood will end up with the same disposition, but I just want to make sure that there are other, there are other entities in the community who are not on the designated list of who gets the initial report, to have the, to have the opportunity to just say, to just look at it, to just know. And it's not just with respect to homeless services. There may be situations in the future where it would be nice, nice, to see if some of our food-growing groups would have notice of some of these requests. In all likelihood, it might not be a good lot for building or for growing food, but what's the harm in just sending out a few more notices to let these groups know about it? That is all this motion is about, and if you're in favor of increased outreach to the community, I ask you to please vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other speakers. Oh, I have some now. Councillor Frank, go ahead.
Thank you. Mine is more of a question, because I've never dealt with surplus lands, I'm not really sure of the process of it, but just trying to understand, if it was declared surplus and then we could sell it, would the community not be able at that point to decide if they want to buy it? I guess, is that a question?
Yes, and we can get an answer for that question, so go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. So generally, when we have a land that is city-owned that is surplus, there's a council policy that we follow. We do an internal liaison to see if there is any need in the City of London proper to ensure that before we declare it surplus, that we've identified that any city-related activities would be taken first. Typically, and Mr. Warner can expand upon this, the policy where we have adjacent parcels of land, we would typically go to them first. In this case, particularly because it is literally in the backyards of some homes, that is likely, the most likely purchaser who would be interested in that land, because it's so small, it would be very not viable to do anything else. So typically, we're looking to see if there is a city-owned interest, and if we need that land, then we would not declare it surplus or not put forward that recommendation, so that we can make sure that, you know, the intent is to ensure that city services are aware if that land is vacant, that it can be utilized to deliver our programs. Otherwise, we would be looking to declare it surplus, and then we would go out to the market to dispose of that land.
Councillor, go ahead.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And then I'm assuming that the parking lot adjacent is a municipal parking lot to the space? Yes, so I guess I'm just curious as to if or when we do an evaluation of parking lots, and I guess my further curiosity is, like, that kind of intersection in space, to me, looks prime for like infill residential development, and losing that space where it could be an opportunity to like maybe add some residential units or something to do with that. I guess I'm just wondering if, I'm like worried about losing it if at one point in 10 or 20 years, we want to develop that area into residential space. So I guess at this point, what I'm wondering is, if we decide to declare it surplus, do we have to sell it, or can we declare it surplus and hold on to it for a little bit while staff decide, like, if we could use the space around it more effectively?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. So if the land is declared surplus, then we would go to follow the policy and go to dispose of that. If council wanted to retain that land, it remains in the City of London and is non-productive space that could otherwise have achieved a cost recovery and/or mitigate the costs of trying to take care of that land in the city's name.
Okay, thank you. Other speakers? Okay, so what we have is the committee's recommendation, which was, I believe, the referral back, so that's what we'll be voting on, so I'll open that for voting.
Councillor McAllister. Closing the vote. Motion fails 6 to 9.
Okay, so the committee's recommendation failed. Deputy Mayor Lewis, I think I said you had an alternate motion.
Yeah, I'm going to put the original staff recommendation to declare the land surplus on the floor from the committee report.
Seconded by councillor Stevenson. Okay, the original staff recommendation that went to committee to declare the land surplus is now on the floor. Any debate or discussion on this? Councillor Trosseau.
So my question for staff is, if I can't move a simple amendment past this council to just show some nonprofits in the area, the simple courtesy of getting the advanced notice, do I need to come back and try to amend the entire process for surplus land? Because it didn't seem to me as if asking a few more notices to go out was such a big ask. So do I need to take some further action on this?
So that's a process question on the general policy, I guess, but there's nothing else that you can, like, the matter before us is the matter before us. I can have staff answer what committee you would go to to have such a discussion on the policy on surplus land, and I'll have the deputy city manager answer that.
Thank you, through the chair. The policy that governs is the disposition of surplus land, so that is a council-approved policy that we follow. If there were amendments to be made to that, it would go through the Corporate Services Committee.
So the matter generally, as a policy issue, can be raised to Corporate Services Committee?
Yes, and again, I didn't think we needed to change the policy to make this very minor, minor change, but apparently we did. So I will be bringing a review of this policy before Corporate Services in the future.
Okay, so we have the staff recommendation to declare surplus on the floor. Any other speakers? Seeing councillor Ferrera, go ahead.
And thank you, and through you. I just have a quick question. So I have read the motion on the floor, and I just wanted to confirm, I think I did speak to this at committee, and I did kind of get an answer, and I was told that we don't necessarily say this outright, but we are going to consider if we go this route, that the property owner that's abutting that property, the backyard, we're going to be reaching out to that property owner first to give them the first right of refusal on the land. I just wanted to confirm that.
Go ahead. Oh, oh, Mr. Warner's online, and I can't see him, so I'll go to Mr. Warner.
Thank you, and through your worship. With respect to this particular instance, there are actually three abutting property owners. So typically, we would do an invitation tender or an open tender and have all three property owners compete for the acquisition of the property.
Councillor Ferrera.
And thank you. Just, I don't have the map in front of me, but from what I remember, I remember that there's, yeah, there's properties in line off of Queen Street, and then the one that I was talking about would be the property that, that it directly links, not the ones on either side, but the one that if you were to have, like, it would be, it would look like a complete parcel of land. That's, that would be the one that I was actually asking to, just because I feel like, you know, if you were to have the other two abutting properties, you would have this, you would have a backyard that kind of wraps around the one property. But I guess if that's, that's the, yeah, sorry, I just want to look at it. Yeah, so that's, that is what I'm saying. So 651 is really what I was referring to, because I do see that that seems like it would be a complete parcel of land right to the back. But so I, from what I'm hearing, you are going to be speaking to the, all three properties around that. So I just, I was more focused on the 651, because I did feel like that would be the most appropriate.
Yes, I think Mr. Warner answered the question on the approach that is taken in this matter, so I'll take that as a comment, unless you have got a more specific question.
No, thank you, through you. That can be a comment. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't have any other speakers on the, what is the original staff recommendation that went to committee, so seeing no one putting up their hand, we're going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 2.
And that completes the third report of the Corporate Services Committee.
Okay, that brings us to added reports. We have the fourth report of council in closed session, which is always an exciting report, and the volunteer today is councillor Ramon to read out our closed session.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Go ahead. Oh, Mr. Warner's online and I can't see him, so I'll go to Mr. Warner.
Thank you through your worship. With respect to this particular instance, there are actually three abutting property owners. So typically, we would do an invitation tender or an open tender and have all three property owners compete for the acquisition of the property.
Counsel Ferreira.
And thank you. Just, I don't have the map in front of me, but from what I remember, I remember that there's, yeah, there's properties in line off of Queen Street. And then the one that I was talking about would be the property that it directly links, not the ones on either side, but the one that if you were to have like, it would be, it would look like a complete parcel of land. That's, that would be the one that I was actually asking to. Just because I feel like, you know, if you were to have the other two abutting properties, you would have this, you would have a backyard that kind of wraps around the one property. But I guess if that's, that's the, yeah, sorry, I just want to look at it. Yeah, so that's, that is what I'm saying. So 651 is really what I was referring to because I do see that that seems like it would be a complete parcel of land right to the back. But so I, from what I'm hearing, you are going to be speaking to the, all three properties around that. So I just, I was more focused on the 651 because I did feel like that would be the most appropriate.
Yes, I think Mr. Warner answered the question on the approach that is taken in this matter. So I'll take that as a comment unless you have got a more specific question.
No, thank you through you. That can be a comment, thanks.
Thank you. I don't have any other speakers on the, what is the original staff recommendation that went to committee? So seeing no one putting up their hand, we're going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
And that completes the third report of the Corporate Services Committee.
Okay, that brings us to added reports. We have the fourth report of council in closed session, which is always an exciting report. And the volunteer today is Counsel Ramon to read out our closed session report.
Thank you and through you, and I was voluntold. Okay, your council in closed session report. Item one, lease extension and amending agreement 251 Dundas Street, London Public Library Rapid Transit Implementation Office that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports with the concurrence of the director, construction and infrastructure services on the advice of the director, realty services with respect to the lease extension and amendment agreement for the lease of office space at 251 Dundas Street, known as London Public Library, the lease extension and amendment agreement between the city and the public library for the lease of approximately 7,495 square feet of rentable area located at 251 Dundas Street for an extension period of five years commencing January 1st, 2024, and ending on December 31st, 2028, be approved. Item two, agreement of purchase and sale of assets from London Hydro, former substation number 48 to 2125 Trafalgar Street, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports with the concurrence of the fire chief, London Fire Department on the advice of the director, realty services with respect to the city purchase of assets from London Hydro, being the building locating at 2125 Trafalgar Street, as shown on the aerial location map, for the purpose of additional storage and other future potential uses. The following action be taken. A, the agreement of the purchase and sale of assets submitted by London Hydro, the vendor to sell the building and assets to the city for a nominal fee of $5, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the agreement be approved. And B, the sale, the bill of sale submitted by London Hydro, the vendor, in connection with the sale of the building and assets referenced in the agreement of purchase and sale of assets be approved. Item three, offer to grant easement and consent to enter agreement part of 1211 Hyde Park Road that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports with the concurrence of the deputy city manager, environment and infrastructure on the advice of the director, realty services with respect to property owned by Motivity Land, Inc., legally described as part lot 24, concession three, part two, plan 33R824, part one, plan 33R2488, save and accept part one, plan 33R18288, and plan, part one, plan 33R19669, known municipally as 1211 Hyde Park Road. The following actions be taken. The offer to grant an easement and consent to enter agreement between the city and Motivity London, Inc., granting the city a permanent, non-exclusive access easement, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the agreement for the sum of $196,000 be approved. And B, the financing of this easement acquisition be approved as set out in the source of financing report. Property acquisition 249 Wellington Road, Wellington Gateway Project, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports with the concurrence of the director, construction and infrastructure services on the advice of director, realty services with respect to the property located at 249 Wellington Road, further described as parts of lot 30 and 31, plan 452, fourth, as in the instrument number 658220, being all of PIN 08364-0020LT, containing an area of approximately 4,563.89 square feet, as shown on the location map for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the Wellington Gateway Project. The following actions be taken. A, the offer submitted by James Alexander Pin, the vendor to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of $445,200 be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the agreement. And B, the financing of this acquisition be approved as set out in the source of financing report. Item five, offer to purchase industrial lands and Driani S.P.A. part of block one, plan 33M592 Innovation Park Phase Two, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports on the advice of the director, realty services with respect to the city-owned industrial land located in Innovation Park Phase Two, being composed a part of block one, subject to final survey in the City of London, County Middlesex, further being part of PIN 081970320, as outlined on the sketch. The agreement of purchase and sale submitted by Andriani S.P.A. under the corporate name Andriani Limited, the purchaser to purchase five acres on the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $825,000, reflecting a sale price of $165,000 per acre be accepted, subject to the conditions and terms as set out in the agreement.
Thank you, Counselor. So if we could have a motion for all of the items except for item four, which related to the Wellington Gateway, which I believe a council member wants to deal with separately. Is there any other items colleagues would like dealt with separately? Counsel Hopkins, no? Okay, all right, so. Seconded by Counsel Hopkins, okay. So this is everything that came out of closed session with the exception of the Wellington Gateway. Any discussion? Okay, we'll open that for voting. Everything except the Wellington Gateway piece.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Counsel Ramon.
Thank you, I'll move to put item four.
This is the item related to the Wellington Gateway, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Counsel Hopkins. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Thank you. We have no deferred matters. Any inquiries? Counsel Ploza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just through you to Counsel Lehman. We had a Dearness Committee Home of Management meeting. I've been elected chair for the next year, ending the term in this November. Counsel Lehman wasn't with us, so we volunteered him. So just a verbal acceptance of being my vice chair, just the clerk could hear you for the minutes for dearness.
I would be pleased to accept the position of vice chair in my absence.
Thank you, and let that be noted to any other colleagues when in absence. We might think you're the perfect person for the job as Counsel Lehman is, so thank you.
I'm not even going to talk about the procedure by law on that one. Any other inquiries that are actual inquiries? Okay, I don't have any emergent motions, we're on to bylaws. I know the bylaw on the Wellington Gateway, a colleague will want dealt with separately. Are there other bylaws that colleagues would like dealt with separately? Counsel Stevenson? If you're not sure which one it is, just tell me the item and we can tell you. 52 you'd like dealt with separately? Counsel Van Meerebergen.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could call bills 62, 66, and 67 separately, please.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, it'll just take us a moment, but it looks like we can deal with. Yeah, we'll deal with bills 46 to 51, not 52, then 53 to 61, not 62, 63, 64, 65, added bills 68, 69, 70, and 72. So that would account for all of the things that everybody wanted pulled. So is there a mover for that? Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Counsel Lehman. Okay, it'll take a moment to get that ready. Okay, so the motion moved by Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Counsel Lehman for first reading of bills 46 through 51, 53 through 61, 63, 64, 65, and added bills 68 to 70 and 72 be approved. That's moved and seconded, it's first reading, no debates, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Mover and a seconder for second reading. Counsel Ramon, seconded by Counselor Van Meerebergen. Same set of bills, this is second reading, is there any debate? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Third reading of this set of bills, I'll look for a mover. Counsel Ferreira, seconder. Counsel Frank, there's no debate on third reading, so we will open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, the next bill that we'll do first reading of is Bill 52, which is the bylaw related to municipal purchase of service agreement for housing stability services. I'll need a mover and a seconder for that bylaw. Counsel Ramon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. There's no debate on first reading, so we'll have that open for voting in just a moment. Okay, that's open now, first reading.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Second reading of Bill 52. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counsel Ploza, seconded by Counsel Ferreira. There is debate on second reading, any debate on Bill 52? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Third reading of Bill 52. Mover, need a mover. Counsel Prival, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. There's no debate on this, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Okay, next is Bill 62, which is a bylaw to authorize the East London Link construction for the Rapid Transit Project. Mover and a seconder. Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. No debate on first reading, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Mover and a seconder for second reading of Bill 62. Counsel Ramon, seconded by Counsel Ploza. Any debate on second reading? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 14 to one.
Third and final reading of Bill 62, moved by Counsel Ferreira, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. There is no debate on this reading, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Bill 66, bylaw to amend, bylaw number Z1, to rezone an area of land located at 49 Upper Queen Street. Mover for that. Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counsel Stevenson. There's no debate on first reading, so we'll open that for voting momentarily.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Second reading of the same bill, I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counsel Stevenson, seconded by Counsel Ferreira. There is discussion on this, any debate? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Third and final reading of Bill 66, moved by Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. There's no debate on third reading, so we'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, Bill 67, which is a bylaw to amend the Z1, bylaw to rezone an area of land located at 608 Commissioners Road West. I will look for a mover and a seconder for this bill. Moved by Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counsel Lehman. There's no debate on first reading, so we'll open that for voting as soon as it's ready.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
A second reading of Bill 67, I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Counsel Frank. There is debate on. Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Frank, there is debate on this, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open second reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Okay, third and final reading of Bill sixty-seven, moved by Counselor Ferrera, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis, there is no discussion on this, so we'll open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Okay, first reading of the additional Bill seventy-one, which is the bill that came out of our in-camera session related to the Wellington Gateway, I'll look for a mover for that, Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Hopkins, there's no discussion on first reading, so we'll open Bill seventy-one for first reading voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Second reading, Bill seventy-one, mover, Counselor Rahman, seconder, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Lewis, there's debate on this, any discussion on Bill seventy-one? Seeing none, we'll open second reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Third and final reading of Bill seventy-one, I'll look for a mover and a second, moved by Counselor Ferrera, seconded by Counselor Lehman, there's no debate on third reading, so we'll open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Okay, that's it for bylaws, before we adjourn, it is Valentine's Day, and I want to let colleagues know that during the meeting, I received a giant envelope filled with Valentine's Day cards from London's Ukrainian community, including a number of newcomers to our city for municipal council, many written from people in our city for the first time, some including children, so maybe to get you in the Valentine's Day spirit, I will read just a couple of them before we conclude the meeting, because they are to all of us, and I will make the cards available in my office for anybody who would like to see them, and we can send the envelope upstairs. Dear City of London, thank you for your generosity and kindness to new coming Ukrainians in our community. This one, I like Canada because I don't live under the threat of death. Why I love London. I love London because I can go ice skating, and Canada supports the Ukraine. Thank you to London, Ontario, for the chance to study and to gain knowledge, the chance to work here, and for your support for our Ukrainian community. Thank you, London, for supporting the Ukraine, I am grateful to this city for the opportunity to study, thank you for the place of residence, and I thank you for the clean air. And then this one, love is, wherever you are together, London, thank you for the opportunity to live a peaceful life, so I will share these with all of you, but I thought that was a nice way to end the meeting, and with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Stevenson, seconded by Counselor Cuddy, all those in favor of adjournment?